Good evening. Welcome to the January 24th, 2024 meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. All members are in attendance with the exception of Jennifer Bryson. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our next item is student representatives from the high school, Madison and Jackson.
Hello, and thank you for having us back once again. Today, I have Jackson Kylie here to present with me. Midyear exams are now over. They began on Thursday of last week and they ended yesterday. The school days were shortened Friday, or Thursday through today because today was ACIT day. Today also marks the start of quarter three, meaning if students took any half-year courses, their new ones began today.
The chess club announced that they will be hosting chess lessons and a chess tournament at the Wilmington Memorial Library, open to players of all ages and skill. Lessons will take place January 31st at 3:30 and the tournament February 7th at 3:30.
The class of 2026 and the Woburn Chipotle are having a fundraiser. On February 6th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., 33% of sales placed online for pickup will be donated when you use the class's code or show the flyer at the restaurant.
The December students of the month were announced this month. All students selected fit the category of contributor. The students were Gracie Giammarco, Matthew Abbott, Marcel Shapiro, Skylar Estabrook, Connor Crane, Adam Alfasi, Daniel Miguel Agott, Tara Lawrence Su, Jenna G. Marco, Adam Belize, Connor Warrior, and Adonia Deschamps.
The WHS band will once again be going on their ski trip to Pat's Peak on February 2nd. And if you have been to some of the hockey or basketball games recently, you may have noticed the pep band playing. In other sports news, congratulations to Lily McKenzie for scoring her 100th varsity point for the girls hockey team.
Congratulations to our robotics team. We had three competing teams and all placed within top five spots. And congratulations to high school junior, Bud Bush, as well. He's a finalist for the Mass Association of Mathematics League Olympiad Level One exam. He ranked 85 out of over 700 students who took the exam and will be moving on to the Level Two exam in February.
The middle school drama club put on their production of The Little Mermaid this past Thursday through Saturday at the high school auditorium. Their Saturday show was sold out completely and the entire show was a complete success. The high school drama club is now rehearsing for Newsies as of yesterday.
The Wildwood MSBA project has a community input session on February 1st at 6:30. Registration has opened for all summer enrichment courses. Some of the courses include robotics, computer aided design, and high school drama workshop, among others. Vision and hearing screeners were done for all 10th grade students on January 10th and 11th.
All of the serving, excuse me, all of the service learning projects have officially been completed and students presented about their projects. At the beginning of the semester, students identified something that they were passionate about and then they spent the semester working to help the issue. Overall, there were 23 projects completed, some of which included a food drive, collaboration with the DEA for substance abuse, a guest speaker, a diaper and wipe drive, and fundraising for the Parkinson's Foundation were just some of the projects completed. One of the projects was also to raise awareness for drug addictions and on January 8th, Brian O'Keefe, a former DEA agent, came in and spoke to the students during W2. Thank you for having us. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments, Ms. Burns?
I'm curious about the Brian O'Keefe.
Yes.
So can you tell me a little bit, I don't know if you attended or not, but you can just tell me, share with us some of the feedback from that presentation and what you may have, you know, gotten from it, I guess the, I found it to be very...
I couldn't attend, did you?
I did. So it was the same day. We had the late start, so it was kind of rushed. But basically, he showed us the difference between a actual, like, facility where, like, medicine, like drugs are made and where, and like, and like the difference in cleanliness between, like, a real medical-grade facility and the, I can't think of the word.
The home, the home shops kind of thing?
Yeah. And he also showed us the difference between, like, real and fake pills and how you can't tell the difference because, like, the, I can't think of any words, but like, how the two different pills look so similar, like, the illegal ones to the real ones that they're trying to imitate.
Very good. Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the committee wishes to take out for discussion before we vote on the consent agenda? All right, then we will vote on approval of the January 17th, 2024 minutes from our regular session. Approval of policies EA, sorry, EEAEI, drug and alcohol testing for school and bus commercial vehicle drivers, EEAEC, student conduct on school buses, EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles, EFD meal change, meal charge policy, GBA equal employment opportunity. And then we have the following warrants to approve, revolving 32, local 59, 60, and 61, food service 36, circuit breaker 15, and special education 30 and 31. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Turner, seconded by Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? And that is unanimous. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brandt.
Thank you very much. Good evening to everyone. There are three items this evening under the report, all of which have items to accompany them in the packet, and I'll go in order. The first is the 2022-23 Wilmington Public Schools Annual Report for the Town, rather extensive document, but one that we're pretty proud of in terms of an effort to try and showcase for the residents and community members, all of the many things that were accomplished and, I think, achieved across our school district last year. The request for this report is an annual request from the town, and they like to compile the departmental reports, if you will. And so it's a year looking back, a year of reflection or in the rearview mirror. I want to thank all of the folks who contributed to this. As you can see, there's a lot of, a lot of work that went into it. Thanks to Ms. Ingersoll for her pulling it together, Ms. Elliott, who works to try and coordinate all of the various folks who contribute to this. And a lot of great information that, even though is now a little bit behind us, still, I think, lots to pause and take a look at. So we're pretty pleased with the direction that this is taking as a report. The next item is Procedures for School Committee Questions in advance of the meetings, and you'll note that I included a memo in the packet regarding this. It is not lost upon me of a couple of things. Number one, there's an awful lot of work, a lot of topics that flow through this committee on a regular basis, and certainly knowing very well the intent for the members of this committee to be highly engaged in and aware of the content and has always a lot of great questions, seeking sort of understanding and clarity and maybe further information. It's also important to me that as committee members, you're taking time to review the packets in advance of these meetings, and oftentimes, not always, but oftentimes, there are questions from members of the committee. And it's important for myself, as your superintendent, and members of our team to make sure we're responsive to those. Sometimes those are questions, obviously, that provide just greater understanding. Sometimes they're helpful to frame the discussion or an action that you may be wishing, we may, as administration, ask you to take. So as outlined in the memo, trying to be thoughtful about this. One adjustment, as you'll note there, is the effort to try and move up the release of the packet a day earlier. For a good number of years now, we've been at usually a Friday release of the packet informations, and I get that that's also very tight and close to the weekend when it's family time and time away from work. And this is obviously a volunteer role, so hopefully a little bit more time might be helpful for you. That's number one. Number two, you know, the effort to try and provide some sort of timeframe in which, if, as members of the committee, you do have questions, to try and be able to share those with the administrative teams, then that allows us, in turn, chance to generate the responses and then get them back to you. So with that, the suggestion around sort of a guideline or structure of how to sort of break these questions out. And again, this is all in the spirit of trying to be responsive, to try and help set you up as best as you can to come into these meetings, to be ready and prepared. And sometimes, no, that there's questions that may be helpful that you're thinking of to share with the presenter, whether that be myself or one of my colleagues. That's helpful, as well as, of course, understanding that there are sometimes questions that just a response may be helpful ahead of the meeting. So happy to pause on this and take questions, comments, thoughts on this, trying to find that right balance that works best for everyone. Ms. Burns?
Just a comment. First off, I want to say I think the annual report came out fabulous. I think it's very engaging, easy to read, even with the heavy content of which is touched upon within that document, but it really, and Tracy? Tracy, I don't know what you're doing as a secretary, because I'll tell you, wonderful marketing materials, and it really is just very easy to read, very engaging.
Who needs a keeper here?
I know, I know. But I want to thank you because it was very well put together and very, the content in itself was grouped in such a way that I think will allow a lot of people who wouldn't otherwise read it, read it and engage in it. So I really, I really do think that how it's presented is a big piece in ensuring that that information gets out readily. With regards to the procedures, with regards to the questions, first, let me say, I really do appreciate the packet release being on Thursday. It does offer me, just as one member with this change, does offer me that time again to be able to do research. So there are less questions that go into, that get sent to you and go into the packet. So certain things, it does offer that timeframe, which is not always touched upon when we prepare. But this research that go in, that does go into understanding how it, not only how it impacts Wilmington, but the broader pictures to the why it's being done. So, and I think, I think, two things that I think that, we haven't started yet, we haven't met in quite a while, the school committee handbook for new members. I think this aspect, if we can maybe take this time to kind of figure out what works, what you find from the seven of us coming to you, what might work to be able to meet the needs of promptly addressing, answering those questions, perhaps we can do ads in addition to that handbook. And ideally, for those who are on the, on that subcommittee, ideally, I would like to see if we can hit it, complete it before the, before the end of spring, just to send that out to subcommittee members. So, but other than that, but that's all I wanted to touch upon. Thank you, though.
Other questions and comments? Mr. Turner?
First of all, I second everything Ms. Burns said about the annual report. I think that was fantastic and very well put together. I had reason to look back at prior ones, and this one stands up very well and highlights even better some of the current or recent past events. The only thing I would ask, I do think this should go in the handbook, there are times when I have questions that are more about either general information that is not time sensitive, and there's also times when I have questions about maybe next time we could do, and it's, so it's not urgent in the top category, and it's not a heads up about something I'm going to ask. So there might be times when a third category of also would fall into that as well. And so I just want to make sure that that's, you're comfortable with that type of thing, where you can say, okay, back of the mind or get back to it later type comments.
I mean, thank you for raising it. And of course, the short answer is yes, absolutely. This is not just about, just to be clear for everyone here and those watching, this is not just about trying to govern questions by committee members about anything of the business of the district. This is more focused on the school committee packet information that we, you know, put together and release to you and the community. And knowing that the reality is, as you all know well, there's a very tight time window, right, in terms of from its release to the time that we meet. And with a lot of members and sometimes more dense content, there can be a lot of questions. And that, again, it speaks to the level of engagement, I think, from members of the committee. But if you're working hard to generate those questions again, or if it's something that will be helpful for you for the conversation, we want to be responsive to that. So, but anytime, of course, there's always that window of opportunity for questions.
Perfect. Thank you. And the Thursday does help. Just to be clear, one extra day is one extra day and gives me more flexibility as to when to look into it. So, thank you.
And I was actually going to bring up, if you, if you had, Stephen, the, that sort of third category of questions that you had, because, you know, things that I need to know in advance of the meeting and things I intend to bring up or discuss is not the universe of questions you might have about the information in the packet. And so it's useful to have another place where we can kind of cabin some of those other questions that are still important and valuable, but that don't need to be, you know, rushed before Wednesday, so that we just have a proper prioritization of that.
And then maybe highlighting, color coding in emails, if that's...
We could do colors.
I'm just saying, I tried...
Red, yellow, gray.
In response to the meeting packet, I did try and I will continue to strive to, but I thought it was easier to bounce off the page when, you know what I mean? But if we can come up with somewhat of a stand, because I made up my own personally this go around this week, but if we can, if we can try to, if we can, great. If we can't, you know, I want, I just, you know, I think it's more important to ask the questions than, but, you know, I'm a little tied base in that.
I think we should all have to send our questions in with an animated gif that expresses the level of anxiety you'll feel until you get the answer to that question.
Maybe just, what do they call, pictographs with like...
Mr. Smaha.
That's okay. Tracy can send, can formulate, format that for us, so.
Along those lines, kind of what I was thinking about it is maybe just adding, like, a code and, rather than having a color code, but just a code, because I know that sometimes when we get responses back, the responses are like, you know, it's the email and the response is back in red, and I'm worried that there's going to be just too much stuff if we did that. So a simple, you know, what was I, what was I saying? What was I, I don't know what I think it is. Like, you know, like, a P or an H, like, in parentheses before the question or after the question, and then maybe, or it could even be like a 1, 2, 3, now we're talking about like a third category. Just something to label each question so that we're, we're being clear that this is something I need before the meeting, or this is, this can wait, or this is that third category. So that, it's actually good for us to think about it, because sometimes when we ask questions, we might not even know, do I want that before the meeting, or am I just saying that just because I want people to know the types of questions that I might ask? So that, doing something, I like your idea. I don't think color coding...
Maybe highlighting the question.
But doing something, like, I think, I think, like, making it bold and putting a...
We'll come up with some...
We should be thinking of a, some sort of system, I think.
Perhaps we can figure it, figure it out and see which options might work well.
Mr. McCauley?
Yeah, so I think I'll go backwards. So just to join the conversation on this, I figured just, let's give it a shot, see how it works. If it doesn't work, we come back and we try something else. But I thought the request was pretty reasonable. And then to the report, I just want to echo what MJ and Stephen said. I found it very professional, very easy to read, really great marketing material, I think, for the district. So nice job on that.
Mr. Fennelly?
Yeah, so sort of to what Mike was just saying, I think, and, you know, David and Glenn and I had a number of conversations about this before this. And so I, Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, I sort of looked at this as something we could revisit occasionally, like, this might work, this might not work. We might find we do something better, we might find we do something worse. We had an idea that Glenn talked to Andy about, and it could have violated open meeting laws, right? So there are any number of different ways to look at this. So I think, you know, we obviously, as a committee, want to be as efficient as we can. We want Glenn and his team's time to be well spent. So we try and we'll see how it goes. And I think MJ, your idea about putting it in the handbook is wonderful. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And one last thing I'll add to this is that, in addition to just trying to make the process more manageable, one of the things that sort of we noticed is that there are a lot of really good questions and answers that are only going back and forth in email and aren't coming out in open meeting. And that a lot of these questions and the answers to them are really great questions to be asked and given during the meeting itself. And so it's also, also the benefit of that and having more of that discussion be here and, and not just going back and forth in text. Thank you for that. Sure. And then the third item, the Western, an update on the West intermediate principal search. As members of the committee know, and many in the community, Dr. Foster, Principal of the West, has shared with us his intent to retire at the end of this current school year, so at the end of June. We have already posted for that position. Again, thank Dr. Foster for coming to terms with that decision and allowing the district considerable time to get out there and what hopefully will be on the leading edge of searches for principals. It's always a good, good jump to be able to have. The memo outlines the process that remains relatively consistent with how we, at least under my time here, have approached these searches. These are multifaceted, and I think they, they need to be. They're obviously critically important for a particular school community. So you can see the outline there that, again, reflects the approach that we've taken in the recent past. I want to take this opportunity and thank the members of their community, the West community, who stepped forward to volunteer, and I won't read their names all in the interest of time, but you can see them listed there on the memo. We have five educators slash staff members from the West, which is great. We have two parent guardian representatives, two elementary administrators, and then, as has usually been the case, Mr. Armstrong, our director of HR, will be a member of the committee and really orchestrate the work. The position is, was posted just before the winter break. You'll see the timeline there at the bottom of the memo. It remains open right now, and my understanding, at least at the very beginning of this week, is that we had 21 applications in total. So that's, that's really encouraging, and there's still a small window of time before it closes. And then you can see the rest of the, the rest of the timeline there, stretching out into mid, mid-March, in which it's anticipated that we'll have a finalist announced. So just wanted to bring you up to speed with that, and thank you again to those from the community who have stepped forward to get involved. And we will always, again, through this process, make other opportunities, even for those not sitting on the search committee, a chance to meet potential finalists and provide feedback in this important selection process. So unless there are any questions on that, that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
Dr. McCauley?
Yep. Just one quick question. How many applicants have you received so far for the position?
Twenty, 21 as of earlier this week.
That's a lot. Good luck.
Mr. Smaha?
I have one, I have one question. I don't necessarily need an answer right now, but just sort of thinking about this is the, this, the data that was collected in the survey about the characteristics the community is looking for.
Yep.
I'm curious what that looked like.
So, yeah, so, and we will provide you with that. I haven't had a chance to work with Mr. Armstrong to pull those responses together, but what we have done in the past, and there'd be no reason to deviate from that, is to pull that together in a, in a brief report. I don't know what the response rate is on that in, on this moment, but, and to compile that, you know, anonymously, well, it was anonymous survey, but to compile that first to share with the members of the search committee as a framework for, you know, who, based upon the feedback, who, really, the type of, the profile of the type of ideal candidate. That's not meant to be secretive at all, and so we'll compile that and share that with the West community at some point in the very near future.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right, and that brings us to public comment. Mr. Fennelly?
There was no public comment submitted in advance of the meeting and no members of the community signed up to deliver a public comment, but as always, if anybody would like to.
Okay. Very good. Next, we move to item seven, new business, and we're going to take these items out of order and the draft calendar discussion to the, to the end of new business. So we're going to start with the high school schedule review and program of studies.
So just as context, as Mr. Jenner and his team, sorry, if I may, come, yeah, come on for me. This is, as some reminder, annually, it is the case, the program of studies for the high school comes before the committee for approval for the following school year. We're, believe it or not, we're at the typical point in time of the school year in which this is, has been the case in, I think, for a number of years now. So that's number one, but then number two, there's a point of connection with this, as you have a little bit of insight, and Mr. Jenner and his team will share with us, and that is a proposal to revise the schedule for the high school. They go hand in hand, and so we thought it would be a good idea to bundle them together and provide you and the community with insight in terms of some of the thinking and planning to continue to move the high school forward. So welcome, folks. Mr. Jenner?
Great, great. Nice to see everyone again. It's great to be back to present both the program of studies and go a little bit more in detail on the schedule change that we alluded to in the December meeting as part of the school improvement plan. As Dr. Brand explained, they go hand in hand, and so I think it's important to understand, one, to understand the proposals with the other. I promised that the schedule review team, Mr. Staffier, who led them, would be here to present this, but something came up with Mr. Staffier, and I am here to present, but want to acknowledge all the staff members from the high school on that team who have worked really over a period of three years on this schedule proposal. So it's kind of exciting to see their work come together. So we'll talk about the timeline of this schedule, the concerns with the current schedule and the proposal as it is. Just a quick recap of the timeline. So this schedule proposal predates me. In 2021, during the NIASK visit, revisiting the schedule was one of their recommendations. The quote that they used is to ensure that the current schedule is working for all students and staff. And over a period of years, the schedule review committee analyzed the current schedule and determined that it's not, for some reasons we'll look at together right now. Immediately, that committee came together. They collected 33 that I could find. I think they probably looked at more than 33 local high school schedules, looking at how many courses are on the schedule, the use of flex time, and a number of other things. At the end of that first year of work, they recommended an 8.0 schedule with the Power Block, which is the proposal we're going to look at tonight. That was the year when Ms. Peters and her retirement happened and the transition to a new leadership and new principal occurred. So if you look at that 22-23 year, that was my first year last year, and Ms. Peters was really clear with me that the, the committee had done a lot of work, that they had identified some gaps in the schedule and the plan to seek a new one, but she didn't feel like it was the appropriate thing to make that change immediately before I kind of came to the building. So I appreciate her having the patience and vision to, like, create that year, to see it in action. Last year, the review committee proposed this schedule, and again, this year, they proposed this schedule. So I feel like I understand it very clearly from the staff and student and family point of view. And so we'll start with the schedule drawback. So what you see here is the current schedule. It's referred to as a blue-white schedule, but technically, there are four iterations, because on blue one and white one, blue one and white one are the first blocks. And then in blue four and white four, the first and the last blocks flip. The concern that arises here has to do with restrictions in the number of blocks that are in this schedule. The fact that white two is the flex time constricts our white day schedule in a unique way that restricts symmetry and creates unequal distributions. There's also concerns that 84 minutes of continuous flex time is not the most efficient or practical use of flex time. Not all students have access to W2 flex time, and actually, some, like, protected groups of students don't, which is problematic. And the lack of blocks in this schedule limit our ability to schedule staff members to have professional learning communities and collaboration time on content teams. To look at like a student's schedule, and I apologize here that you can't see the colors as well, but this schedule, in all except the blue four box, are filled in with requirements. So in grades nine through 11, assuming they're taking world language, most colleges recommend three years of world language, all but one block are automatically filled in with school requirements. That does leave an elective block. However, that elective block is automatically consumed if a student is non, in, on an IEP and has a learning center. That has to land in that block. Students in performing arts, those are, you know, typically a four-year commitment. It has to land in that block. And every time that something has to land there, it restricts the student's opportunity to explore other things in our very diverse program of studies. And sometimes the, the comment comes up that, well, it's an elective and that student chose to use it on performing arts. But, you know, we don't believe that being in performing arts should preclude you from studying business or from going more in depth with an English writing elective or something along those lines. You know, jazz band students are actually the most restricted. They have to take their band during that elective. There's nowhere for the jazz band to occur, so it actually occurs during W2 and those students lose their flex time. So problematic from that regard. Also problematic from the teachers... Also problematic from the teacher's perspective. Teachers have to have one of the four blocks off for prep. As you can see here, there's very limited space for that to happen, especially on white days. W2 and flex time, all teachers are on during that time, so it's like considered an on-block. So they only have space for two classes on their schedule on white days. That immediately throws our whole master schedule out of balance, and it results in teachers and students having very heavy blue days. This is the proposed schedule, so it basically adds a block and spreads flex block over both days. For simplicity's sake, you see it here, but it's still proposed as the first and last block alternating on blue four and white four. It shortens the class time to 74 minutes, which positively responds to concerns from students and staff that while the move to a block schedule allows for deeper sustained learning, the 85 minutes is long and significantly different in terms of classroom management and instructional planning than the proposed 42, 40, excuse me, 74 minutes. Similarly, breaking flex block out of the once for 84 minutes into an every day for 48 minutes is intended to create some rhythm in having it every day predictability, but not that long sustained period of time. We talked at the school improvement plan meeting around arriving at that 48 minutes, which is, if you add them up, a slight expansion, but beyond 48 minutes, for a lot of the uses that students and the school are using that flex time, not only retakes and reteaching, but also school counseling, seminars, and other programming, the schedule review committee felt like that was the, the best balance of time. Additionally, when you look at a student's schedule, they will still have one block that might still be consumed by some of those prior commitments I already described, but it adds an additional elective slot where they can explore more of the career clusters, more of the program of studies, or really specialize and build, you know, a personalized transcript in an area of their choosing. In this model, no classes will need to run during W2 and flex time, so all students in the building will have that, is what I need time. The other thing I would note here is that students will now be taking an additional class, which does impact our class sizes and staffing. If anything, it's a more efficient use of our staffing because teachers will, you know, have closer to a full class load, which is positive for the interactions happening in that classroom, for the classroom dialogue, the interactions amongst students, and so it's a more efficient use of our existing staffing. If you look at the 8.0 teacher's schedule, you see that every day, they have a prep similar to the current contractual requirements, but there's also an additional block off where we're, we'll be able to extract their duties, which they're currently doing during their prep block, and have a dedicated duty block. That allows those prep and CPT blocks to be undisturbed, which is in alignment with NIASK's other recommendations about making, making sure that the school creates common planning time for teachers, especially on same content teams to collaborate together. While we probably don't have space to have like the whole science department off at that time, we can definitely have like the ninth grade bio team off at that time, or the ninth grade global one team. So, so it'll take a lot of planning on Mr. Morenda's part, but this structure allows that to happen. And that's the side-by-side. In the big picture, there's a lot more than just changing the structure. We're viewing this as adding one class but rebalancing the other seven, so this isn't just a net add to student's schedule. It does include both a time and curriculum consolidation of some units to make sure we're not just piling on an extra class for students. Staff will have CIT time to modify the curriculum, CIT day, and department and faculty meeting time. I also think during the previous presentation, I talked about how not all 85 minutes of every class right now are being utilized in a super effective way. There are almost some like accommodating practices that have evolved to try to help teachers and students manage that really long period of time. So we don't think that in all cases, this is going to be a curriculum reduction. We also developed an expectations chart, which you'll see in the proposed program of studies. The purpose of that is to increase consistency amongst same-level classes. We have observed that even in the same content area or two different college prep classes, the workload and the homework load can vary pretty significantly. So the goal of this expectations chart is to note how the levels are different, but also how they are the same across teachers, across content areas, to create common expectations and continuity for students, families, and teachers. The school counselors will be an integral part of making sure that this doesn't turn into a net add for students. The school counselors meet one-on-one with students as part of the course selection process, and they will be counseling against overloading. This additional slot is intended to be an elective slot. It's not intended to be, you know, a heavy, heavy workload. In the past, the school counseling office has observed that, you know, some of our most ambitious students who look to really create a pretty challenging schedule will schedule up to four AP classes, and there are some who even ask about five, and five seems to be the tipping point that we've observed where, you know, the performance tends to suffer and the outcomes are not as positive as students who take on that four. So we've added language about a waiver for five APs to really be consistent with our messaging that this additional slot is not meant to overload schedules, it's instead intended for elective space. And one thing I want to make sure we acknowledge is that AP courses do have like a start and a finish that students across the country are expected to cover in preparation for the AP test. Here in the Northeast, we actually have less time to cover that curriculum than other departments. We're aware of that, our AP teachers are aware of that, and we're looking at how we can use enrichment time during those flex blocks, especially on a schedule, to make sure they're not all doing it on the same day, to provide additional practice, more in-depth study on a more enrichment basis, to try to offset some of that time change. So we're at the program of studies phase of this next steps. We've got a lot of input on this schedule. They've helped to tweak and evolve it as we've gone. We had student, student input opportunity during W2. We had a virtual forum of families in the evening. We've spent, you know, department and faculty meeting time getting, you know, this proposal polished up as close as it can be, and we're now at kind of the implementation phase where the impacted changes will need to get worked into the program of studies. I think that's why the program of studies we're talking about tonight has probably more changes than normal, and this many changes won't be a new normal. It's kind of like a transitionary period, and later, when we talk about the student handbook, there'll be adjustments that need to go in as well. So I know that's a lot, but I want to make sure that you and everyone watching at home, you know, is up to speed on a lot of the great work that the team has been working on, and certainly, if there are any questions, I'm happy to address them at this time.
Questions or comments? Ms. Burns.
So first and foremost, and I'll piecemeal this, I thank you very much for being so diligent in answering the delusional questions I sent to you. I, I wouldn't, I think, benefit, and I think I understand, there's one particular question with regards to, several years ago, there was a big push for, for 90-minute core classes, which I believe was, was the recommendation from DESI, and it, and it directly correlated with MCAS state scores, but it was also, and this building in itself was created for, to give more time to collaborative, project-based hand, hands-on learning, so that teachers could break out and have students collaborate in groups, and I think the second floor, I haven't been up on the second floor since the opening of the high school, but there were, there are push-out spaces for that to transpire, so they're not always sitting in the classroom, and, and to meet that 90 minutes. So I think that's where I couldn't, I didn't realize exactly, well, you know, NIASK came in, but that was after that DESI recommendation of pushing it, you know what I mean, creating 90-minute sessions in core classes. I personally have to say, I, I much prefer this schedule for all the host of reasons that you've touched upon, primarily for common meeting times with teachers or PLCs, which, as we know, we've, we've heard for years with our teachers, we need that common planning time for each, with one another for curriculum base, and but, but it's, it's, it speaks more to team-based building as well. And so, but, so, and granted, I much prefer this schedule than the, than if it's the 90 minute, the 90 minutes in a core class, you know, if that's not being utilized, and our students don't learn in that capacity, then anything that sometimes is rebellious against DESI is good with me, anyway. He, he works for MCAS, we're not talking about MCAS. So, but, but I want to say I thank you and I applaud coming up with a schedule that would benefit not only our students, but our staff in the process.
Dr. McCauley. Thanks. Yeah, so I'd just like to echo what Ms. Burns was saying, you know, I thought the schedule looks pretty good, you know, obviously, a lot of effort, time went into that. I think question for you all is, sounds like there's a lot of positives. You talked about one drawback being the AP courses, but any other drawbacks or risks that, you know, we should be aware about?
Yeah, I think one is that they, you know, last year, as part of the budget process and the enrollment changes, there were some staffing reductions. And, and in this model, maybe as a result of some of the inefficiencies of the schedule, still the class sizes were not overloaded, they're well below kind of the contractual limits. I made a comment about this new schedule more efficiently using or maximizing our staffing, and we do anticipate that most of the classes will fill up better closer to the contractual limits. But there has been more space, I would say, in, in the class sizes than there typically is in the high school schedules, and so this will be more similar, but it might lead to less space for movement. I would imagine like we're having a lot of students transferring in at this point in the school year, and the number of elective choices or space in schedules for students transferring in in January will be much tighter than it is in, in this current model. So we certainly think we can fit, you know, we're not concerned about not fitting all the seats and all the tallies, but it'll be a different amount of flexibility, especially later in the process.
That makes sense. So if I can understand you, it'd be benefit that we're actually going to fill out some of these electives, but the detriment is that there might not be space for other students potentially, because we are going to fill these courses out. Am I right in interpreting it that way?
Well, I don't think that there won't be space, but I think there'll be less flexibility, less space.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
Mr. Fennel.
Thank you. Great presentation. Two, and my first question, I think you said this process started before you, so if you don't know, that's acceptable, but you mentioned 33 local high schools. Local to the area, are they local, like as in comparable sizes and enrollments? Is it both? How did that kind of shake out?
Yep. Fortunately, Molly Dickerson, school counseling at CCL to my left, and Jonathan Morenda, assistant principal to my right, were here at this time. I don't know if either of you want to speak to kind of the sampling of other school schedules?
So we took the idea from DESI and what DESI identifies as local schools. There was a list that Dr. Brand had given us, that schools similar to our demographic, not necessarily schools that DESI would compare us to, and then local, regional, and over ready, north ready, Billerica, so really is a pretty good sampling.
Sure.
Pardon me, of schools in the area. Thirty-three were identified, there were more than that.
Yeah.
It was a lot, a lot of time identifying other places and visiting, thinking about that.
Yeah, it's kind of, I was, that's kind of what I was looking for, is that it was a good sample size, but that it was, you know, sort of representative of, so. Thank you. The last one sort of piggybacks what Dr. McCauley was saying. As far as potential downsides or negatives, what are the thoughts from the staff? I mean, it seems like this is beneficial to the staff. Are there concerns that the staff have about moving to this new model, or?
No, it's, it's been pretty overwhelming support, including from the general staff, but I should also like specify from the WTA and our building reps. There have been some, like really specific questions about how this will impact, you know, like we had the reader leader programming going to the other schools, and that really benefits from the 84-minute block. So it's not a concern, it's just something we'll have to tweak and work out. Some questions about some other courses, not so much as part of the schedule change, more the program of studies changes. So a couple of specific things we got to sort out, but in terms of kind of like the engagement impact of the shorter classes and students being able to pursue their passions, like those things seem to have outweighed some of the more specific questions.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Turner.
So first of all, thank you all and the whole team. I, I really do think this is a great idea, and, and a way to balance what W2 is and what it can be and what it should be. I do, it's, it overlaps with the program of studies, but certainly the expectation charts and being more consistent across CP honors and AP, I think is a very good thing. The one other place that I had heard historically where the longer class benefited besides AP was also in science labs. Was there any concern with those? Because those are some of the things where just, once you set it up, you need to finish it. It's, I, I know it's nine minutes, it's not a huge drop, but was there any concern from the science department on the lab side, I think?
So essentially, no, because the nine minutes doesn't drastically change it. I think if we tried to go back to 45-minute classes or 50-minute classes, that would be so significant of a change that they wouldn't be able to work it in, being, you know, three or four minutes tighter on the front end and the back end. That hasn't been raised as like a real significant cost of this change. There was at least one science teacher on the review committee, and so that hasn't emerged as like a significant holdup.
Okay.
It's something we can continue to like monitor and explore. Some schools, as part of their schedule, have like additional blocks attached to the science block, and so it's something we can definitely monitor and tweak as we go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smaha.
Again, yeah, thank you, and I go all the way. I feel like, I feel like if I just go into my questions, I'd go say thank you, because I really do appreciate the presentation, that would be just neglectful in some way. I, I totally support this schedule. I think it makes, I think it makes a lot of sense. I think one of the things, and I think that you alluded to it as well, in terms of special education students who have that, I think, the, the learning center block, like this is going to allow those students to still get those services, but also get some elective time in there, which right now, they, they don't have. And I think in some ways, that mirrors what happened at the middle school level and, and some of their schedule changes, just to sort of equal things out and allow, just because a kid has, you know, needs a learning center, doesn't mean that they don't have other interests and stuff. So I think that's a really important part to highlight, and one of the, one of the things that I really like about this new schedule, I think, on a similar note, as a parent of a kid in the jazz band, like, you know, like he had, he has no flexibility in his schedule. He's like jam-packed, and I think, of course, he's graduating, but, so it's, it's won't impact him, but, you know, like for, for a student in his same situation, I think it would be, it would, it would have allowed, because he's, you know, my son has a lot of interests, and I think that would have allowed him to sort of expand even more. So I like that. Part of, the other comment that I have is in terms of, you were talking about the expectations sort of being balanced across the different types of classes, and I think by, I think in addition, adding the, the CPT time, so if you're saying you could get all of the ninth grade bio teachers together, that means you're getting the ninth grade, you know, honors level, CP level, whatever the levels are, together to have, have, set aside time to have those conversations, so they can be talking about, well, what are you doing? What are you doing? So I think you're going to see, I think that's a definite bonus to this. My, thinking about the AP stuff, I would want to know, because I know that there was, there was a lot of talk about looking at those other 33 schools and their schedules, but there was also talk about what are the course offerings at lots of other schools? And I'm curious, we, you know, what do other schools do for AP who have shorter than 84-minute blocks? Like how do they get the, schools in our, you know, in our area who have the same yearly schedule constraints?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to refer back and get some of their expertise, but I, I know that, you know, we're trying to be over the top with making sure we have everything worked out just right. I've talked to other AP teachers in- I've talked to other A P teachers in the building who are, who will say eighty-five minutes is a long time. We're going to trim it, we're going to be concise, it's not going to be that big of an impact on my A P class. So, I also don't want to overblow, you know, like overexaggerate, you know, that, that our A P is really hanging on figuring out how to use W two time. There are a lot of teachers who are confident they're going to make this transition smoothly. We just want to kind of provide more support and more structure than necessary, in case there are places where it's more difficult. But we can go back with the Schedule Review Committee, find out the answer to that question, I just don't know.
I mean, I'm, I mean, it's just, it's just something to, to, to think about.
Yeah.
I, I think you've all been suitably thanked by the committee, so, so I'm going to hold off on, on the additional, additional thanks. The, I, I, the benefits clearly seem to so outweigh the potential detriments here that this, I mean, it's, it's kind of one of these, you know, ah, you know, the best time to have done this would have been years in the past, the second best time is as soon as possible, which will be, you know, next year. But it's, it's out, it, it seems great. The, I mean, I think the biggest concern that I had, you have addressed in great depth, which is the additional work and making sure that we're not adding additional burdens onto, onto students. The, you know, having the new class times be so close to the old times is, is a great benefit in that teachers are not going to have to radically rework their syllabi and how they, how they teach their classes. They have to be mindful, but it's not, you know, a major overhaul. But that also brings along the danger that it's also easy to just sort of try to go along and still give the same assignments and not necessarily be thinking that like, oh, there's this extra course that a lot of students are going to have. And, and again, this is clearly front and center in your, in your thinking and in your concerns. And, and I, I'm, I'm glad that it is, because I think that's a really important part of making sure that this, that this really works out the way, the, the way that we hope it does. And awesome, Ms. Dickerson, I think that the, the additional work that the school counselors are going to do with the students and also, you know, preparing them for, for this extra elective option that they're going to have, I think is also going to be a really important point. So, I'm, I'm very, very pleased that the School Counseling Department is so deeply involved in, in, in this work as well. You know, for years, I've looked through the Program of Studies and just thought, wow, it's so many great classes. And then you sort of find the reality, it's like, ah, that people don't have room in their schedules to take, especially if you're in band or orchestra. And so, this is, I think, a really, a really great move forward. But thank you. See, I'll thank you anyway.
Great, yeah. You know, and that's just the appetizer to the Program of Studies. So, as I noted, the, you got a lot for the Program of Studies. Last year, it was mentioned that you prefer the red line edits, so you can see exactly what was adjusted. You know, the thank yous go to a lot of people for managing that mega-document. You know, the teachers in the courses, proposed changes that, you know, based on how the course is going. The C T Ls help organize it for the departments. Mr. Miranda, Mr. Staffier help kind of coordinate and get those things into the document. The School Counseling Office kind of helps across all departments to make sure that there's consistency. And certainly, my assistant, Sue Murray, you know, gets all of those edits into the document, which as you can see is a Herculean affair. So, thank you to all those people. I attempted in the packet to also provide a summary, which tries to categorize all of these changes by department organization and then types of edits. I think for the people listening at home, a quick overview of the broad summary. We updated the program descriptions for college prep, honors, and advanced placement courses to more accurately, accurately describe the experience of students. We developed a course-level expectations chart to communicate clear expectations for students, staff, and families. We updated the total credits and elective credit requirements to reflect the impact of the new schedule. We updated the School Counseling Page to more concisely describe their offerings. We increased the consistency of elective offerings and organization. And then we had lots of department-specific course additions, course removals, title, description, and level changes. And all those things are noted, both in detail and in general in the packet. There's a lot, so I'm happy to provide clarification or answer questions related to those Program of Studies changes, too.
Ms. Burns?
Again, I thank you so very much for responding to the war and peace amount of questions I posed to you. I, I, I just wanted, I guess, that really, there's only two follow-up questions, and I, I guess, one's a more comment pertaining to, it's page forty-three of the slide, I think it's thirty-two of the Program of Study, page thirty-two, under recreational sports. I know you, I, you, you, I appreciate you recognizing where my concern was, the way I read it and I interpreted it. And I, I, I would, and I certainly defer to you language around, I don't want it, the discourse description to dissuade anybody of any physical abilities, of, you know, whether it encompasses a physical or mental or, you know, any, to, to not consider that, you know, and that might, and it, that too may actually boast further questions as to what type of sports would, you know, would that encompass, which I think would help make certain students decide whether or not it's something they want to pursue or not. But I, I, again, I just, I say that just to point a reference. And I, and I, I thank you for your clarification and, and a broad understanding. I, I, because I don't want to be, don't want to misunderstand, the, the Biology MCAS review course, I think it's fabulous. I, I think it's absolutely fabulous, especially with regards to what the MCAS data points, and it's not just us, it's throughout the state. I think that may bode well for just giving us that momentum and push forward going forth. You know what I mean, in our sciences, all of our sciences? I, I wonder, and it's, and it's probably not a, a topic for this discussion, so I would defer, but again, as I, concerns for students who may not have passed their tenth grade MCAS and the other testing subjects. You know, I wonder if there's some other area of enrichment that we could offer those students, whether it be like an after-school type of programming. I don't know, forgive me if, I don't know if that's something currently offered or not, but I, I, I just, I just think that, you know, I think we want to see every child succeed, and granted, and MCAS is only one measure. You know, it, it's not all the, the measures that we, as our district and our staff do on student learning, but it is something, again, that's, you know, mandatory for graduation. So, I just, I, I put that out, it's just a, a thought that that would be great to see to me. And I know that there's a lot of work that is currently being done within the school day for those students as well. I recognize that, but I just thought, I had to touch upon that. And, and I, and, and then lastly, on page seventy-nine of the slides, it's the Program of Study, page sixty-eight, pertaining to the theater performance, the full-time, the full year and half-year. I, I think if, you don't mind just looking at that language, because it, it, it does kind of read to me like it, there's a requisite when there really isn't. Do you know what I mean? I just think, and it's just one way, and I offer that only as one person who doesn't know the description reading it. It just, it just kind of malign me, thinking, well, is there a requisite or isn't there? But I, I thank you for the additional clarification, because it's, it's, it's greatly appreciated. And thank you and, and your team and your staff for the time in, in coming up with a, a Program of Studies that will engage and motivate our students in expanding their, in wanting to expand their interests and broadening their horizons to different experiences within our, within our high school. So, I thank you so very much. I, I'm grateful sincerely.
Great, and thank you for that feedback.
You're welcome.
Dr. McCauley?
Thanks.
Is that my timer?
Yeah, I know. So, yes, so just to kind of echo what Ms. Burns says, really great critical review of this. I think a lot of the changes made are really great, spot-on. A couple just small things I noticed, and I was wondering if I can bring those up for discussion. So, on the first page, program descriptions, the academically motivated language, I was wondering if that can be changed? So, it's present for the honors and the A P, but it's not in the college prep? So, I was kind of thinking like, by calling out this language here may convey the message that the students in the college prep are not really motivated by academics in a way. So, don't know if there could be maybe a different way to convey the intent there.
You referring to the chart?
I think it was in the text.
Okay.
If I scroll up and take a look.
Final, it's page eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a good point. I think the intent there is to highlight kind of the voluntary nature of wanting to take on additional coursework, but that's not to say that another student is not academically motivated. So, I think we can stick to describing the environment and the intent of the student. So, that's good feedback.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good. And then similar, under the college prep, I was wondering if you wanted to consider changing this to college and career prep? And kind of noticing the paragraph, the end of the paragraph describing ended in college and career prep, so it kind of can convey to some of the students that, you know, like, yeah, and everything that we're not offering here at the high school is for college-bound students, like if you want to go work, this is what you can do, too.
Yep, absolutely. That's something that our team had a lot of conversation about, actually. The two kind of prevailing thoughts were to move to a college and career prep label for that level of course. The other was to remove the label altogether, and that being our standard level of course, without a honors tag or an advanced placement tag, that is our English nine course. I learned a bit from Ms. Dickerson about how those tags are meaningful in the college application process, where students have to select what level of course they took, and there's a defined dropdown. College prep and standard being kind of the industry standards. Do you want to explain? You can probably explain if I really may, yeah. Although, how was I doing? Because you talked.
He's a very good lesson, or he's a good learner, or both, I don't know. Yeah, so one of the things we looked at is our, the common application which our students use almost exclusively to apply to college. And then there's something called an S R A R, which more colleges are requiring now, where students report their own coursework as part of the application in addition to a transcript. So, like, we still send the transcript, but the student is expected to enter all of their coursework. And both of those platforms right now have a list of sort of what they expect to see as a course level, and they all include college prep. The second most common option is standard or regular, and then there's honors, I B, A P. So, it's something that we talked about just in the sense of, would it confuse our students in that process when we have to report, when they have to report what their course levels were? Will it change our transcripts? Would it confuse a college to see something like that? So, it's not necessarily a, a major change, but when you're looking at what the colleges use now, college prep is generally the most widely used. And then, like Mr. Jenon said, potentially removing the label completely would be probably the next most common.
Sure.
So, I think that's a long way to say, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I think to make a change that's not like, that's not messaged fully would run the risk of being confusing and almost like, run the risk of like moving away from college prep, which is, changing the tag certainly wouldn't be, but I wouldn't want it to be misunderstood. So, I think that's on our, still on the table for future edits, and, and we'll try to make sure we get it just right.
Okay, no, that, that makes total sense, and things have obviously changed since I applied for college many years ago, so it's good. And then just one, one last question was, you know, first time for me really seeing the whole high school breadth of offerings, and it's really comprehensive, a lot more electives and everything than where I went to high school, so which, which is great. So, just wondering, thinking ahead, you know, kind of blue sky, what other courses and programs would you all like to add?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's a question that was most recently asked in twenty-twenty-one. So, there was a program review that occurred as part of the N E S visit to look at our Program of Studies and the surrounding communities, to see what the similarities are or what the differences are, like what we're missing that other communities are missing. I think one example that's timely to highlight is computer science. We were lacking competitive computer science courses that were available elsewhere. As a result of that twenty-twenty-one program review, computer science courses went in, both at the C P level, also at the A P level. And last week, the school got recognized for the Female Diversity Award for having over fifty percent of the A P Computer Science enrollment reflecting, you know, female students. So, what my point is, is I think in twenty-twenty-one, we really did a deep inventory of what we need for courses. And still in this Program of Studies, we're trying to carry out that twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one review. So, I think once we get all those things kind of in, we'll be in a great position to look at it again. You know, teachers are excited, you know, we had a great conversation with one staff member who's really passionate about a journalism course, wants to implement the course, wants to see that turn into a school paper or a school newscast. So, there's passion there. It's almost like we just need to kind of finish one menu of things first and then execute the next. One of the things that I'm excited about in doing so is we have a number of courses in the Program of Studies that haven't run in five or more years. And so, every year, those pick up stray requests that we don't have enough to run, but that makes the tallies for our other courses inaccurate. So, I think once we kind of finish this phase of the Program of Studies, open the door to new ideas, we can also kind of clean up some of the underutilized courses to really maximize the effectiveness or the efficiency of the Program of Studies. So, I, I would hesitate to list things, because I want to make sure the staff have the.
That's fine, no, it makes sense. You're, you're still getting through the process, and then you'll be ready there soon. Cool. And then just one final thing is, I'd like to see in the biotechnology course, I work in biotech, so it was good that it's here. So, if you need any assistance, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, we'll make that connection happen. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
So, two things. First of all, thank you for all the updates and, and all the, the edits. The, every time I look at this thing, I wish I could go back to high school and just, I mean, it's, it's, we had a good selection of courses when I was there, but it's, it's nothing compared to this. One thing I did look at, though, is, is with the, the expectation chart, it kind of highlighted, when I thought about the eight-point-oh, and thought about what the numbers were, and if I took like a sample child, two A P classes, three honors, no, yeah, three honors and three C P level, and added those up at the high and the low end, you get to five hours and forty-five minutes of homework at the high end, and three hours and forty-five minutes at the low end. That's a, when I think about it in those terms, that's a lot of homework a night. Bordering on six hours if you add one more A P class, then. And so, is that, in the, in the review of thirty-three other school districts and the review of expectations, is four to six hours of homework a night, especially if you've got a sport or a band or a extracurricular activity, karate or whatever? Is that, are we in the right place with that?
So, I, I would, I think, look at those calculations together. You know, a number of those courses are bound to be elective classes, and in this move, all the electives are college prep level, and there's a specification in the honors, excuse me, in the college prep homework, that elective courses may have less or no homework. So, those courses could come off the table to begin with. Our recommendation is no more than four A P classes, which should balance out to two per day. But if you're getting two hours of homework for your two A P classes, like, and we're trying to resemble a college environment, then that's a lot, but it's for a student who has, you know, voluntarily asked for the college-level experience. So, I don't think we're going to see instances where we're approaching four to six hours of homework per night.
So, clarification, then. I, I was, it says per class per night, and I was thinking five days of class, class homework. Even if you're not in the class, how much, are you expecting homework, an hour tonight, an hour tomorrow night for an A P class? Or are you expecting the hour that day effectively? I mean, obviously, it would have hurt out, but.
Yeah.
So, I may have doubled, and so maybe the language there might be.
Sure.
You know, per class, not per class per night, because then it becomes five days of A P homework a week.
I see what you mean.
As opposed to, so I may have misread it, or maybe that's an opportunity for clarification.
Yeah, we can definitely clarify that, because that's saying like, on that school day, you'd receive assignments that would be due, not the next day, the following day, theoretically following two forty-eight minutes of W two plus, plus homework time. So, we can help kind of spell that out. And I think certainly, you know, if this Program of Studies and all this is approved through the School Counseling Seminars, we have regular meetings with all of the students to really walk them through building the schedule, understanding the expectations chart. So, you know, it's new to everyone, this is kind of the first real read of it. So, that's helpful feedback in helping us kind of communicate it more clearly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you. Continuing sort of on that expectations chart, which I love, I think it's, it's fantastic. Is there thought or interest in putting it elsewhere in, you know, the, the handbook or something? I think, I'm thinking it's good information for the students, but also for the families. Like if, you know, when my kid gets to high school, I would like to know what he should be expecting as well, right? Because he's not going to give me that information. But so I, I think this is great and I would like, I was just curious if you guys had given any thought to using it elsewhere.
Yeah, I think you'll see it everywhere. Dr. Quirk has asked about using it with the eighth grade teams and making recommendations for the high school, the department leaders after, if they could use it today during CIT day for the curriculum map. So, you know, absolutely, to your point, I think it's going to be all over the place. And, and I think that's why we made it, right? Like the feedback from students and families and teachers was we need more concrete clarity about, you know, what we're looking for. I'm glad to hear that, you know, there's some tweaks to make and we'll make it better, but that it's landing kind of in that ballpark.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Continuing that, that theme, the, I think this idea of consistency across, like greater consistency across the school and across teachers and so forth, I think that's really important and I'm, I'm so thrilled to see that so much thinking is going into that. And following on what Mr. Turner said, that, you know, the idea even just that, that all teachers have a common understanding that, because I think that that's not always the case, that, you know, when you have courses that don't meet every day, then one teacher may have an expectation of, well, you know, you're going to do homework the night before you have my course. And another teacher might have an expectation, well, you have two days to get this homework done until we meet again. And so I'm assigning homework, but I expect that you have two days. And making sure that there are common understandings of how much time do you expect, you know, do you expect to students to have two days and therefore assign, you know, a reasonable amount of two days worth of homework, but maybe another teacher is not thinking the same way. And making sure that everyone's on the same page in, in that respect and others, I think is, is important and it, but it really sounds like you have your, your eye on the ball on that area.
I think so. And just to connect back to Mrs. Mahas comment is like if we also have the collaboration time for teachers to be talking about this as it's going, like I, I think it's really going to be transformative, kind of in the teacher experience, but then certainly in how the kid experienced the course.
Yeah, common planning time, that's going to be a game changer to be able to do that for real.
Yeah.
At the school. Other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks.
Roll cats.
Don't want to steal your thunder. That would be inconceivable.
Still haunts that.
February 14th. Yep. Yeah, just, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Jenrin. I'm Mr. Miranda.
Guys, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we have this here, it is typically the case that this is a first read, the program of studies, just to be clear and specifically, but we'll have it back for, thank you for your hopeful approval at the next meeting, February 14th. I, I know we, we approve the program of studies, do we, we don't also need to approve the schedule? That's just, that's more informational. That's informational, yes. Yeah, just clarifying. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item under new business tonight is the recommended budget for fiscal year 25. There is an item to accompany this in your packet and we'll try and go through this rather, rather quickly. So again, just for members, maybe more of the community who are, are tuning in, we do go through as a presentation, the administration's presentation to the school committee, a number of, a number of different budgetary presentations. This is, this is par for the course. We start typically in December, which we did back in December with what's we term a preliminary budget. Just to put a frame around that, the preliminary budget is what we believe to be reason, based upon the information we have before us, reasonable estimates to bring forward and package together as a budget. That moves on to this place that we are this evening and that is the recommended budget. And so call it roughly six weeks or so since work went to pull together the preliminary budget information, two things have really happened. One, we have been able to hone in more specifically on what we believe our projections are in enrollment, particularly around some of our more, for special education programming. Just but other six weeks passes, it's a lot of time to, to gather more of a honed, sort of honed in focus on what we believe our needs are fiscally for the following school year. And the other, the other piece of information that emerges, as is typically the case, is a better understanding from the town in terms of what is believed to be possible to support department budgets. Just as a reminder, we are one department, albeit the largest in the town, but we are one department of many, police, fire, and of course, many others. Tonight, our effort is to try and bring all of this information together and to provide you with an update on from where we left off now to where we are this evening. As we'll talk about at the end, this will take us into our next budget presentation that's planned for February. On this slide, it provides you with an overview of what has taken place more specifically again, since the December 20th meeting, which is when we provided you with a preliminary budget. Our leadership team, Mr. Rosario and myself met with the interim town manager on January 2nd, the very beginning of the new year, to review the district's preliminary budget. That is a process that certainly during my time and I know well before it, has been what transpires. And that is to have that meeting and to be able to walk through the town manager with what the, the fiscal resource needs are of the district going forward. We shared with the interim town manager that our budgetary roll up at that point in time was 4.34% or you can see a little bit more than $2 million increase from current fiscal year 24 to 25. During the course of that meeting, the interim town manager had asked if we as a department could adjust that budgetary increase overall and try and align with that with a 3.75% increase. 3.75 in comparison to 4.34% increase is an adjusted reduction necessary of just a little bit over $280,000, as you can see in that third bullet. Again, that's, this is, has been somewhat par for the course in terms of these conversations and a better understanding around where, at least through the eyes of the town manager, the budgetary resources lie for, for the town. Our team in turn, as we in such circumstances do, we circled back together, primarily the central office leadership team, to take a look at more specifically two areas of our operations that we thought we could make adjustments to, to align with that budgetary request from the interim town manager. And they're highlighted here, the increased use of circuit breaker funding as well as additional salary savings. I should note, the presentation's not going to go deeper into these, but obviously if you have questions, we can, we can tackle those at the end. I think the really important piece to point out though, is that last point on this slide. And that yes, as a, as, as a number, it's understood that a little over 280,000 may seem like, and it is, a large number. That said, we believe that we can make these adjustments, align with the town request and not adversely impact our staffing that we presented as part of this overall budgetary increase for fiscal year 25, the budget plan. Said another way, we believe that even with this adjustment, we can open our doors in the fall with the appropriate level of resources and staffing to support the needs of the district, based upon all of the information that we have as we stand here before you today. In addition to that, at that, at that meeting, the town, also the interim town manager, or temporary, sorry, town manager, also had requested if the district could consider making a, an adjustment to the capital requests. You know that that's another important and rather large number for the town every year. Again, not just based upon the school district's requests, but all town departments. You recall and included in here later in the slides is an overview of the many capital request items that we present, presented to you previously. We in turn came back and we talked to the central office leadership team and honestly, in this particular case, they really all, they are all connected to technology. And so with Mr. Lord's, Mr. Lord's view of things, he felt comfortable that we could push ahead for a year, so moving out to fiscal year 26, three particular items, and you can see these highlighted there. The elementary projector replacements, the security camera improvements and the auditory sound system at the middle school. Just to be clear, this is not a removal of these items from the list. It wasn't a wish list and we've been, you know, asked to reduce and so we've taken them off the list. Rather, it's a view of, we can, we believe under Mr. Lord's leadership, we can get another year out of these respective items, but due diligence would push us in a path towards, they need to be replaced. The plan would be to push those off to fiscal year 26. And you can see the respective amounts for those capital items. In terms of the personnel, and, and this is a budgetary, a budget plan to support our contractual and service delivery obligations. You can see again, as a, as a point of reminder, largely people business, we know this, we talk about this an awful lot, not just the Wilmington public schools, but any school district around. This, this work and these, these numbers go largely to support the personnel that we have. And that, as you know, rolls up to be just, just shy of 500 full-time equivalent staff members. The fiscal year 25 recommended budget relative to personnel goes to support, support the negotiated contracts for all of our bargaining units. That puts us in a good place and just as a reminder going into fiscal year 25, currently all of our contracts are settled. That will be a different conversation next year, but that's a year from now. The total increase to the budget that directly goes towards supporting all of our employee groups that we hold oversight for, our responsibility fiscally for, you can see that rolls up in terms of steps and lanes, a little over $900,000. Salary increases, a little over a million dollars and longevity, a little over $11,000. So you have to think about this and members of our community and, and state that taking our existing full-time equivalent staff members and rolling them into next year, these are the dollar figures that are built into contract increases, contractual increases that the school committee has respectively with these various employee groups. We have since the last time, or not since last time, through this planning, I'm sorry, also identified as we always try and do adjustments that we think we can make in staffing. Things change from year to year in, in a number of different areas. That could be enrollment driven, that could be special education program driven or everything in between. And you can see the highlights there that the salary replacements and reductions at just 4.8, 4.80 FTE equivalent. We've also though, through our, our due diligence and planning, added 3.60 FTEs. We've identified the need to do that in order to meet a variety of legal and contractual requirements, particularly, and you'll recall, we, we focused a little bit more on this last time in December around English language learning and the, the respective need that we identified to expand the staffing in those areas. The overall personnel as mentioned in the fiscal year 25 plan is 488.15 FTEs. That's a slight reduction of 1.2 from this fiscal year. As you recall, relatively speaking, our enrollment, I, I would describe as flat overall going forward in the next year, based upon, based upon the information that we have. This is a view, you saw this slide last time during the presentation, but I think it again is a nice visual overall of what our staffing, those 488 plus FTEs look like. We've made the respective adjustments Paul has here. So they're slightly adjusted in some areas since the December version. But again, you can see as an organization, obviously, the largest groups are, are general education teachers are at assistance and special education teachers followed by the others there that go towards contributing to the programs and services each and every day to operate our school system. So at a high level, the slides that follow, they reflect sort of the, the view that you typically see from, from, from Mr. Rosario in his office. They've been adjusted accordingly with some of the changes that I mentioned a few moments ago. This slide shows the personnel changes for fiscal year 24 in comparison to this plan that's being proposed for your consideration for fiscal year 25. And you can see a lot of numbers there, but you can see the adjustments from one fiscal year to the next. With those personnel changes comes, of course, the salary changes and the careful tracking of that. I, I highlighted earlier, the steps and lanes and so on, the other things that make up this. Again, there's a lot of things that our, our finance department tracks carefully. Collectively, the fiscal year 25 recommended budget, just a little bit over $39 million. The percentage change from this year to next is 4.24%. Non-salary changes that we've talked previously about, there are an awful lot of these that also as a school district, we have an obligation to attend to. Going to detail those, but certainly transportation, textbooks, the work of the, the, the work of education in terms of curriculum supplies, professional development and so on. And these are captured here. Overall, the non-salary items rolled up just a little bit over $10 million to operate the Wilmington public schools is what we are anticipating and planning for, for next year as a percentage change, 1.93%. So when you roll all that together, the recommended budget looks like this. And you can see on this slide is comparative, again, breaking down as you've seen before, the salary and non-salary items. You can see in a comparison, in a comparative sense, fiscal year 24 budget, what that looked like from the preliminary budget when we were before you in December, what it looks like now as part of the recommended budget and then those, those changes. The bottom line, we, we believe that we can make this adjustment as requested and again, a 3.75% increase. This, a lot of numbers, a lot of things here, but this is just an updated overview of the capital items for fiscal year 25. You'll note, we took those three items that was on the earlier slide that was shared with you and those have been adjusted into fiscal year 26. And as is always the case, capital is, we try to be thoughtful around a five-year outlook, lookout window. And so these are highlighted there. So as a summary of where we, we stand right now, again, as I, I think it's important to make it clear in message that this budget plan supports the necessary staffing that based upon what we have in terms of information and known students right now to deliver the programs necessary for our enrollment predictions for fiscal year 25. It also addresses and shores up additional support for some of our more intensive needs students. And that includes of course, special education as well as EL, the EL student population. And I think that's just important to note. Next steps in the process, January 29th, obviously not a presentation for this group, but for the, at the town manager level. That town manager's budget presentation is being made on Monday of next week. As you are aware, we have a budget hearing that we have to do annually. All school, all public school districts do need to comply with that formal public hearing. We have that scheduled. This is typically the case in February and that, that is scheduled for your February 14th meeting here in this room. February 29th, we have our scheduled meeting as a department with the finance committee and then May 4th, the Wilmington annual town meeting. So this is an update this evening. We are not looking for your vote of approval tonight. That comes with the, the budget hearing though in, on February 14th. And with all of that, happy to take any questions that members of the committee have.
Mr. Mahas.
I'm, I'm curious, thank you for this, of course. I'm curious, has there been any communications with the finance committee regarding any of this so far? Are there any updates on that you might provide us? Because I know, you know, in years past, sometimes it's not always been smooth.
I mean, I'm happy to speak to it or we have members of the school committee, then the budget subcommittee.
Sure.
So we have reached out to them and we were not able to organize a meeting to preview this. They're aware, I mean, they're certainly aware that we spoke about it on the 20th at our meeting here. They're aware that it's on our agenda tonight and that it'll be on the 14th. And then, and then part of our, our outreach in terms of having a meeting was some conversations among our group as to how we might best present some of this information and it led to some of the changes as well in terms of presentation here. And so I, I believe we are in a good place to present to them, but just from a timing and organization perspective amongst the, the two groups of volunteers, we did not organize the meeting that we hoped to this year. We will try earlier next year with that process for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, okay.
Ms. Birds?
I just had a quick, I think I, I just, it's more of a question, but I just need to, it's a clarifying question. I know in part of the reductions, it, you note to increase use of CB fund, circuit breaker funding. And then I looked at what the circuit breaker funding was, is I guess being proposed for fiscal year 25 is just under $70,000, right?
Increase to that.
Oh, so.
Increase to the offset.
Oh, okay. All right.
That's a change to the offset.
I, okay. Thank you. I think that, okay, thank you. That clarifies it for me then. Appreciate it.
Mr. Turner.
So thank you again. So thank you again for all the details and all the effort in revising this, and being able to meet the request from the town manager. I really appreciate that. A couple of quick points I wanted to make. One, I really want to say how much I appreciate the revision you made to the chart of staff to highlight the work that the educational assistants do, and that a large part of them, seventy-one out of the eighty-nine, are focused on special education. And then adding in the special education teachers, there's a huge component of what we provide is what is appropriate things for the students to meet their needs. And so I think it's really important to see that piece. And it goes to the level of service that can be required, the addition that's required for staffing is a one-to-one educational assistance. So that's the right, that's what's needed for the students, and it's a very important thing for people to understand about our budget and our entire need to meet the students' needs, is there are some students that have a very wide range of needs, and the staffing required to accommodate those is, it can be very intense sometimes. And the other piece, the last piece that you mentioned, I believe in our last presentation, this is a level service budget.
Yes.
Fundamentally, we are, and to one of the questions you had, Mr. McCauley, the other time, Dr. McCauley the other time, this is not driving new program, new growth, this is to maintain where we are. And so I think it's important to highlight that point. Where we are is a good district that does a lot of very good things, but this is not a, does not represent growth, it represents maintaining where we are. So thank you very much for all your efforts on this.
I appreciate those comments, and I will say that, started to think about the point made earlier, the question around sort of where, you know, has the, there been the opportunity to bring the finance committee up to speed with this? And I will say that it's my thought that the presentation that is put together for your budget hearing might be, might have a little bit of a different look in the previous times, and go sort of that place of expanding upon the staffing adjustments that have happened over time. It's about the educational assistance, but it also, it also very clearly highlights as a district, the reductions that we have made as a district in certain areas, specifically general education teachers over the last decade-plus, as an effort to try and respond to the adjustments to end downward trend of the enrollment. At the same time, it very clearly shows the increase in our special education staffing, our educational assistants, and some of the other, for example, guidance and psychologists. And we've talked at length about that, but I think it's, I think it continues to be important to try to clearly convey that to the members of our community, which is about our finance committee, but our community at large, that despite the fact that our enrollment, like other districts, may be declining, student needs are going very much in the opposite direction. And we also continue to believe as a district that where and when we can provide those services for students who might need more intensive services in our school district, that is better for the child, that is better for their family, and that is better for our community. But that does come with oftentimes a cost.
One last point, just because you just raised that point. I do think one of the things that's very important also for the community knowledge is, it appears, based on where we are and where Paul rolls the numbers forwards on enrollment, that we may have reached the low point of our enrollment. It is, it appears that in the coming years, and particularly if we maintain something in the range of seventy percent coming from the middle school to the high school for freshman year, that we will actually start to turn the corner on enrollment and be growing slightly. So the trend has certainly been down over the last decade-plus, but we may not be in that trend anymore. And it's very likely the way it looks right now is that we may start heading up and be having different conversations about enrollment, and I think that's an important picture, an important piece of the picture.
And I think, I think so, and I also think that we actually gathered some data that I'll use as part of the next presentation in terms of where as a community we stand over the last few years in regards to enrollment trends, and in comparison to other communities. But also the high school, you know, obviously, that's been a large focal point of our conversation here. It is impossible to divorce the reality of the overall population of our district has declined over the last ten years. Obviously, thereto, as the enrollment of the high school. At the same time, the retention rate from eighth to ninth grade, and as well, the students that seems very clearly, and the numbers, Mr. Gendron could speak to this, I can't sit here and tell you, we've had more than the normal year of students returning in ninth grade who left, who made the decision to leave at the end of eighth grade and have decided to come back. I gather that, those numbers definitively, but I think the answer to that is yes, and there have, and there continues to be, and you heard him hint about this, I think, tonight, about students who are continuing to come back to Wilmington High School. I think it's probably no surprise that, you know, to anyone, that as our program of studies continues to expand and to bolster, you know, our enrollment, or sorry, our participation in athletics, even though the enrollment is, is up. I mean, things are trending in a very positive direction that I think very clearly, for some of our students who might be in the middle school now and their families thinking about alternatives, I think, I think very much that there's going to be thoughtful discussion and conversation around, boy, Wilmington High School can provide a very, very comprehensive and great educational experience for the high school, and I think we'll see that correlate with our retention rate.
Mr. Fenner.
Thank you, yeah, just a curiosity question, because I can't recall, three point seven five increase this year, what was it last year?
Four.
I think it was three point.
Three point seven. It was about the same, right?
About the same, correct, yes.
Thanks, Paul.
Oh.
Three point seven five.
Hmm. So.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you. So I know that the, with regards to the contractual piece, so what about the, and I know that this budget is reflective of just the cost of sustaining the programs that we have, and I know even within that, that we have been able to drive and expand on certain items, not the big ticket items, but I guess, and I know you plan accordingly, and Paul, thank you for keeping us in the block for decades, which is, which is an unusual feat in any school district in this day and age. But I wonder how, with the needs, I mean, there's so many facets. I think with each passing year, the resources that the schools are providing for not only our students, but for their families and the rest of the community increase. I just don't want, and I think Mr. Gendron was a great example of innovative and creative program of studies as a piece, but we will need to look, look forward to, as society and careers change and evolve, there will be another level of technology, and as Dr. McCauley did speak to, about, in things such as biotech and biomedical fields, whether it be technology, whether it be labs, whether it be other resources, we want to make sure, because I think this high school schedule is a first strong indicator, we need to continue growing our schools, not only our programming and our, the resources and the opportunities for students, not just at the middle school, high school level, but at the middle school. And that's going to take, education does come at a cost, and we just can't, I don't want to say status quo, because that's not really relevant, but after decades and decades of unfunded, underfunded mandates, which we will, we will come across in the future, we can't just sustain to sustain. And public education and education in general is an investment in our government and in our future. And I just, I just caution, and I just worry that, yes, you know, I know we do need to be fiscally responsible for the, for not for the, only the benefit and the viability of our school district, but for our community, of which we serve, but we, we do, we'll need to maybe start planning in a forecasting-like way about how do we start chipping away at these things that our students will need to know, and open up those doors of opportunity for them to start here. I just, and I may not be articulating it as well as I'd like to, but I just caution on, I caution that at some point, it'll come to bite us, and, you know, bite us. All this hard and great work that's being done, that it, it could work to our detriment. As to what that could look like, I can't say, but I just, we just can't, I say this cautiously and respectfully, we just can't maintain a status quo for sustainable, for the long-term sustainability of public education in our community. I guess that probably is the only way I can say it quickly.
I have a couple, a few questions and comments. So the shortfall, so to speak, between the preliminary budget and the recommended budget today, so the preview, one of the first slides talked about essentially being made up in two places, the circuit breaker offset and salary reductions. Can you give some more detail on that? I know circuit breaker is a little bit weird, but if you can explain sort of what the circuit breaker program does, and how we're able to cover some of that budget decrease.
With the circuit breaker.
Yeah, with circuit breaker.
Sure. So the circuit breaker is a funding mechanism that school districts receive a reimbursement or funds to cover a certain percentage of special ed tuitions in transportation, in transportation. So at the end of each fiscal year, our Student Support Services has to build a large database and submit it to DESI that outlines all the costs by student for special ed tuitions and transportation costs. That goes through an audit process with DESI. And once that's approved, they take that whole dollar amount of expenses the district incurred, and it's offset by a, it used to be four times the foundation budget, it's changed a little bit, but there's a dollar amount, say it's forty thousand dollars, I'm making this up. So if you paid, it costs you a hundred thousand dollars to send a student out of district with transportation, you could get reimbursed the difference between the hundred thousand, you subtract that forty thousand, so that's sixty thousand that's left, DESI then is part of the state budget and so forth, can reimburse up to seventy-five percent of that cost. So that's an amount of money that school districts get quarterly during a school year. So in our budgeting process, we show gross special ed tuitions, but then you notice there's a special ed tuition offset, circuit breaker offset, it's called. It's a negative number in the budget. That reflects some of those funds that are coming from the state. And what we did this year is, the difference between what we received in fiscal year twenty-three and what we are receiving for circuit breaker reimbursements from the state in fiscal twenty-four, is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar difference in increase. So we took, not quite half, but about seventy thousand of that, and used that to increase our circuit breaker offset in the budget, just to close the gap, to get us to the three point seven five. If I could just mention, the salary changes, many of them were, do the timing of the budget. We get people retire, and they get us information at the very beginning of December, very end of November. From a timing perspective, I don't usually have time to get them in the preliminary budget that she had with you in the middle of, later in December. So a lot of the savings that we have seen is related to people who are retiring. We also, during the course of, from, you know, really, middle of November to now, we had some open positions, we had replacements that were hired, that might have been lower or higher salary than what was being carried in the preliminary budget, and we may have also had someone that resigned, so we put in like a placeholder for that position. So that, for the majority of the savings from a salary perspective, was related to that retirement, so the cost savings. So if you have someone that's making a hundred thousand dollars, you assume the replacement might be eighty thousand, so there's twenty thousand dollar savings. So that's kind of how we do that, and we've done that every year.
People with like more longevity and who are higher.
Exactly, yeah.
Higher in the steps and lanes.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, and so this is basically the sort of unknown, or at least not quite anticipated information from the preliminary budget.
Correct, correct, yeah.
You know, at the, at the time, you can't assume people are just going to retire or to replace them. Okay, and then the circuit breaker also fits for out-of-district.
Out-of-district.
Placements, to be clear, that that's a, that aspect of.
Yeah, it's also, I think, if students in district get a certain amount of services, there's a whole process, I think, the special ed department has to go through to, you know, if the services that the student that's in district is receiving goes over that threshold, I think there's a piece there that they can claim as well.
But this is primarily out of, about the cost of out-of, out-of-district tuitions and transportation.
Correct, yeah.
And remember, we had that whole huge increase.
Correct, yeah.
In the tuition prices that the placements could charge. Great, thank you, thank you for that explanation. Comment-wise, I want to briefly echo Mr. Turner's comment about breaking, how breaking the ed assistance into how many support special education versus regular education, because when you look at that, you actually see that we have more ed assistance, basically one more, but more ed assistance serving special education than full teachers. And that when you add them both together, and of course, then you actually add in the additional support staff and student services, and psychologists and counselors and BCBA and on, that more than thirty percent of our FTE headcount is supporting special education directly, you know, in the classrooms and with these additional services. And that that's, you know, it's like, if you don't understand that, that the percentage of people that it takes to service our special education is much higher as a percentage than the percentage of the student body that are receiving special education services. It's like, you need to understand that to understand the school budget. My last comment is about the capital deferrals for the capital expenses, and I understand why we're doing it, and I certainly think that if we can, you know, put off expenditures because the equipment we have now is going to last for another year, then, okay, because we shouldn't be spending money that we don't need to spend, we should be getting the most out of our, you know, equipment as much as we can. But I do have a little bit of unease of pushing too much down the line, because when you look at that slide for the projected five-year capital expenses, next year is a doozy, because you take those three big items.
Next two years.
And push them into, yeah, I mean, the next two years, but, you know, next year, you know, you take those big items, and now we're looking at, you know, eight hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars of projected capital expenses next year. And if we go to that, you know, go to the town manager next year with this proposal, you know, very likely to say, hmm, that's a lot of capital expenses there, can we push something off to the following year? And maybe we can. So I don't want to basically say just like, no, we have to draw a line in the sand, but I think we do have to be a little bit careful, because, you know, you keep pushing off, and you push off, and push off, and you kick things down the can, and then you start getting equipment failure, and.
Issues, yeah.
And it's, it's something that I just want us to be a little bit careful about going forward with the capital requests.
So I, we agree with you completely. When we move the items that we moved, we had discussion with, as Superintendent mentioned, with a director of technology, and he was very comfortable with moving those particular items. What's left in the budget are really critical in FY twenty-five, they really need to be replaced or replaced in FY twenty-five. He's also in the process of creating a new tech plan, and as the tech plan evolves, some of these things might move out again, some other things might move in. So as he's going through that, there might be adjustments when we do this next year for twenty-six to thirty, FY thirty, so, but we're barely cognizant of, you know, can we get by with something for another year or two, or we need to replace it next year? And that's what we have in FY twenty-five, our items in his estimation really need to be replaced in FY twenty-five.
And I'll add, the other thing, of course, we, I think I mentioned before, that could impact this, is what the, by this point in time, we'll know what the new school building, Wildwood School building will consist of, and that could very easily impact this capital list, depending on once there's a clear view of what that building will consist of, the grade levels, schools combined, and so on, so.
Yeah, that's a, I'm glad you brought up that we're developing the new tech, you know, technology plan, because we may go in a different direction.
On certain things.
For some of these, some of these kind of expenses and technology. That also kind of gets a little bit back to Merz Burns's point about looking forward and thinking about what's coming. Budget for the future. All right, any further questions or comments? All right, and we look forward to seeing this.
Thank you.
Again, for the budget hearing on February fourteenth.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Let me to jump to the calendar.
Yeah, so, budget, all right, so now we're going to return to the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So it is, there is information to accompany this item also in the packet. Not at all unusual at this time of the year to start to get a sense of the school committee around what the following school year calendar will be. You know, this is one of the decision items that you have authority over. There's a memo that accompanies two different versions or two different looks of the calendar, not with a lot of differences, but some. But there are some things that I think really this year are a little bit, a little bit different for you as a committee to consider going into next year. I tried to point these out in the memo. Just as some context setting, as a reminder, within the contract, the Friday before Labor Day weekend is a, is to be a non-school day. And so consistent with that and the contract language, both versions here, again, include what will be Friday, August the thirtieth, as a non-school day, right before the Labor Day weekend. There are some developments though relative to voting and the Town Hall School Administration Building. I tried to outline these in the memo, but let me take a pass at trying to describe this for the listener who hasn't, or the viewer. So we know that there's a important building project that will be breaking ground in March, right, this March. The Town Hall School Administration Building. That building will be, as many know, built across the street from the Roman House and is set to break ground, as I said, in March of twenty twenty-four and open in the summer of twenty twenty-five. But the relevance of that project is on parking. And, well, there's a couple of points of relevance. One is on the impact on student parking lot, Swain Parking over there. But the secondary impact has to do with the closure of the Wildwood. And that was, as many know, that was one of a few voting locations in the town of Wilmington. The other is the Butwell, and as I have come to learn, the other is the Town Hall. With the Wildwood completely closed now and offline, that removed the thought to use that facility any longer. The cut of utilities and so on just made that not an option. The town is, as we understand it, is fully anticipating to have voting precincts move into the new Town Hall School Administration Building once that building opens. There's actually a large, for some of you who are familiar with the project, it's actually a very large room or rooms in the lower level. And that's the plan. I'm not sure how many precincts are planned to be moved in there, but I think many, if not all, is the thought. But I don't, please don't quote me on that.
The new Town Hall, my, I recall the most recent conversation, I think it's all six precincts was the idea.
So there, this, there's all an intersection, stay with me with the calendar here where this is going. And so the town approached us last year, I think originally at the end of the school year, to say, look, we're in this, they're in this sort of challenging period of time with the Wildwood closed. And until the new Town Hall School Administration Building can open, could they, and the town in turn, use the high school as a voting precinct? That's not currently the case. We had some, we've had a number of discussions about this. And as I've shared with you previously, I know that many schools around do operate and, well, while school is in session and voting takes place, I think that with appropriate provisions and planning, we can accommodate that. Especially for the elections that tend not to have as large of a turnout. Next year's a little bit different though, with the presidential election, as you know, in November, November fifth. So all of that together, we've had to think a little bit more differently about the calendar for next year. And we've tried to map that accordingly. So this is an interim period, right, next year? The voting therefore has a different point of relevance here for the calendar. And as you'll note in here, I think the biggest one to point out is that with the granting of permission for the town to use the high school as a voting location, and with their understanding of concern of making sure that there's no access issues for voters in town, and that has to do with the parking lot. And that has to do with our staff. And where are they going to park and back to the Town Hall School Administration Building and a limitation on parking across the street? There's a whole lot of moving parts happening. And so it's with all of that, that although a little bit unconventional, the recommendation for your consideration here is to actually close school on the presidential election day, the next November. It's this sort of one-year unique circumstance or situation only, and have that as a non-school day. The other, as if that's not enough to consider, the other thing is a winter break. Not that this hasn't happened in the past, it certainly has, but a little different in that the Christmas holiday falls on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth. I'm just, although it's noted twenty-fourth, so my apologies on that. A look back in time has seen that when that happens, when Wednesday is the Christmas holiday, the district has closed previously in other years for both Monday, what would be the twenty-third, and Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. So another thing to consider about how we approach that. So with all of that said, we've tried to map out some possibilities here. I know there's a little bit more than usual for you as a school committee to consider. And we certainly, you know, I think like lots of things, there's pros and cons to different ways to approach it. But we're happy to try and work this through with you. I think it's important to point out that there's no, there's no need for you to take action to approve anything today. This would be a first read anyway. And based upon all of these possibilities and changes, if you feel as a committee more time is needed, there's no policy that you have that states you have to approve the calendar by a certain date. This just seems to be good practice to hit January, February with the time that we can then notify families about what the calendar's going to look like.
Ms. Burns.
So I'll take, make a preliminary comment that the, not that it's really easily identifiable, but the calendar you're proposing where taking December twenty-third as a day off, as I think, is reasonable. Because I don't think that there's, even if there was any prep or any, I don't think we'd get the student population to really make it worth. Well, I was going to touch upon that about, and staffing as well. I think it would be, it would really make things much more complicated in whether or not the twenty-third could be used as a half day for staff, whether it be for PLC meetings or collaboration. You know, something like that, I mean, that's another possibility or spin. Even if for a half day use, I know that we, we look to see how we can give opportune times. And granted, that's a hairy part of the year with the holiday, but that's something perhaps could be utilized. But it's not, I say that as a creative suggestion, doesn't have to be taken seriously. I do think, I think you're right on the mark with regards to the presidential election. I think besides parking, I think the traffic, even with police detail, will be horrendous. And getting buses in and getting buses out would be very complicated by the heavier traffic, especially if the high school is going to pick up more than just, is it just the one precinct that would have been a Wildwood?
He's just getting two precincts.
Two precincts, so, so yeah, so that.
Three and four, I think.
Okay, so I would rather err on caution so that for safety of students, as well as the safety of anybody crossing over Middlesex to get into the high school for voting. I think, I think it would, it makes sense. And we'll pray for no snow days that year, but.
That's another thing.
We won't go there, but, but I just think that the, that, this particular option makes more sense than the second one. I mean, I've tried to look at the second one in different ways as to where the benefits and the pros could be in that. And I just, but I think just logistically, in common sense, the, the one that just says first reading is the one I think would, would be the one I would go, go through unless there was other recommendations from the board with regards to.
If I can just comment, I do think, you know, relative to all of your considerations, you know, student attendance is important. And it's not just to get the day done. And I think, I think, I know some know my feeling of not being a huge fan of early release days. Well, professional development is one thing, certainly, but just early release for early release, you know, it's still, it's one of a few precious days. It's not a lot of days we have. And even more so though, I think the consideration of the impact on student attendance. And if we believe or no that that could be a low student attendance day. Obviously, that's, that has impact in a multitude of ways, learning. But, but also, you know, if, on our accountability and under the accountability system and where this is going with attendance. I mean, we want to be mindful of that. And I think if you start to sprinkle through a school calendar, a variety or a handful of days that may lead just naturally to lower student attendance, I think we, as a committee and as an administration, need to think critically about that. So I can see twenty, the twenty-third, perhaps some might argue, just to come back for one day, especially for families that may be traveling, that probably would yield, I would guess, lower attendance.
Well, and I think it would also be, could be a struggle. It doesn't necessarily have to be, I don't want to say it a wasted day, but as I said, even if staff want to have faculty, certain small faculty meetings via Zoom, for instance, or something to that effect. I would encourage if there's a need, but I'm just thinking that that could be very well an opportunity, a possible opportunity not otherwise created.
Mr. Turner.
So with regard to the twenty-third, I, I would be curious to know what the staff think about the idea of working that one day and what they would view in terms of the educational value, in terms of the student attendance, in terms of their own attendance. I, my initial reaction is, I have a hard time seeing that being a day where all those things won't happen, where we won't have low attendance on the teachers, on the students, on all the staff. And so then to that point, I really struggle with not having it as a day off to begin with. I do also have a very strong opinion on half days other than for professional development or conferences. I, they don't seem to sit well, it's either we're in school or we're not. The idea of a half day, we talked about it prior year with December. And I know I heard from several people who thought we should have had a half day on the Friday and told me I was wrong, but several people. But the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the last many years, we've had that as a day off. I know before, when my kids were much younger, it was a half day. I would be inclined for that to stay as a day off or a full day. And so I start with day off because I think that has worked well. I know that pushes all the calendar things out as well. But I think having a half day there doesn't sit well. It's either on or off from my perspective, and logically with where we've been, having it off makes more sense from my perspective. Obviously, others may have different opinions on that one. So with the different things, certainly I agree with you on the election, just getting buses across town to the other schools will be difficult that day. You know, so even if we just closed the one, I think that's problematic. With regard to the twenty-third, I lean strongly towards not having that day. And then with regard to Thanksgiving, I would lean strongly to not having that day either, the twenty-seventh. I know that puts a lot of pressure on the end of the year and a lot of pressure on our weather forecasting. But I think those are the right choices from where I sit.
Mr. Fenner.
Thank you. I'm curious, this, more related to the elections, not the presidential election, but the others, where we're proposing that teachers would park in the student parking lot and the students wouldn't essentially drive to school that day?
So if I could, so the first election we have coming up is in March of this year. We actually have a meeting next week, we've had a few meetings, but we have another meeting.
The state primary.
Yeah, so we have another meeting next week with the town clerk, high school administration, superintendent, myself, police, public buildings and so forth. So, and as the superintendent mentioned, initially the fencing for the Town Hall School Administration project was supposed to go up on March first. The last meeting we had, they didn't think that was going to happen. And I think they said during that meeting that the fencing will not be up for March fifth, which is the election. So that being said, and I haven't gotten final word exactly when the fencing is going to go up. But anyway, with that, that whole lot would still be available. So depending on the number of spaces that are required, the town clerk had put a document together that we have to talk about. It's not using the entire, for this election on March fifth, it's not using the entire staff parking lot. It's just a certain number of, I mean, no, the staff, the staff parking lot. There's some spaces they'll need to cordon off, but some staff will be able to park there, some staff will be able to park across the street.
Turnout won't be as high, right, so, okay, makes sense.
And then I think the high school principal will have to make some determinations of, for that one day in March, how many students can actually park there or have to take the bus that day.
Sure.
That's what this, this coming election. Going forward, like the, and we should be okay for those. And that's why I think the presidential election, we'd have all fencing up. You just couldn't really, it'd be very difficult to do anything there.
Well, and I think if you, I would, I would request that once that meeting, that conversation takes place, if you guys could bring us that information, because that's, my concern comes into the transportation piece of it, where are we expecting that a large number of students will one-off one day, want to utilize the buses? Like that's going to throw the whole system, I think, for a loop, right? So I, while I don't have issues with having school in session, and sure, I think we need to really make a point to work that out in advance. So if you could, once that conversation happens with the clerk, let us know. I have one, maybe two more, one more? I couldn't find it in here, and I feel like I'm missing something glaring, but why is April eighteenth a day off? Thank you, thank you. I knew it was something and it wasn't listed, so, okay. And then I think just in closing, I'm inclined. I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Turner. I think the day before Thanksgiving, I, I struggle with that one. I understand the idea of the early release data to get a day in, but I also wonder what participation is going to be like. So just something to think about, but thank you.
Dr. McCallough.
Yep, no, thanks. So going back to the election, just wondering if the town considered other sites such as Shriner's Auditorium? And the reason why I bring that up is when I was looking at the schedule, by having the high school and all the schools be off on Election Day, that pushes the last day of school up for snow days to that week of the twenty-third. And then also it's kind of hamstringing us about that Thanksgiving Day. So just wondering if they looked at other options and if they've exhausted all their options.
Yeah, I believe they look, but I think at the end of the day, that when they use shrines before, I think the Monday use ones before, it didn't go as well as they had hoped. So they had approached us way back, probably, I think, when Jeff Hall was still the town manager and we hadn't been doing the end of last school year. And, you know, through the discussions, we thought that, you know, the high school would work.
I think there's, I believe, and I don't know how long this has been happening, I think Amazon is using part of the space over there for parking now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. So there, that's, I think, one challenge. I think another one, I don't pretend to understand all of it, but the advance notice that has to be made in terms of the decision-making and notification, there's a lot more to it than just picking another site, so.
Sure.
I don't, and I don't know that there's another site that they have available to them in the vicinity other than that. So that's why understandably came back to sort of the schools.
And then another question, just clarifying for community's benefit and everything, is the soft launch in August? You know, they kind of see the benefit, you know, you kind of have like that little soft launch, people get back, they get their feet wet. But I have heard from parents and guardians that it's a bit of a struggle to change childcare that week because it's so chopped up. And then the kids have to be at school Wednesday, Thursday, but then they need to find options for Monday, Tuesday and Friday. So I was just wondering if you could maybe explain the rationale behind that and.
Well, a couple of things I think to point out. So first off, for some time, this is going back, I think, I think we made the change maybe three years ago, four years. The district used to have just one, if I remember correctly, one professional day to get things up and running. And we determined that's just not enough with all of the things that staff have to do or we are required to ask of them from training standpoint. It was a number of days ago that we, we didn't add a day to the calendar because that's a contractual matter, but we shifted what was the November day to that. So my point in this is, so now you've got those two back-to-back days, Monday and Tuesday of that week before Labor Day. And the Friday, the contractual day, as mentioned earlier, of Friday off. So that has now sort of squeezed it into a couple of days. So the soft launch, I think, as you described it. And I've heard, I've heard both too, I've heard that that's, you know, the. And I've heard, I've heard both too, I've heard that that's, you know, there's some benefit. And I, and I can, I can think back to my own time as a, as a classroom teacher. Boy, those four, and I used to start after Labor Day, but four days in a row is a lot for everybody to get it back into routines, and I'm sure our educators here might agree with that. So, I think there's some benefits to that, but I, I think there's a con too, and that's,
Sure.
I know I've heard that. You know, some have thereby raised the, well, do we just start school after Labor Day? Some districts do, I don't think a lot around here do, but I'm not a hundred percent certain of that. Certainly, as a school system, we could have staff back before Labor Day. Contractually, there's not an issue with doing that, and then have students start after Labor Day. My, my guess, though, would be that starting after Labor Day, boy, there's a lot of people who just don't like ending school closer to the end of June, so there's the tension with that, but.
Yeah.
It, it, contractually, it can be done.
Okay. No, thanks for clarifying that. Then, one last question, kind of rationale behind this is, if you look at the demographics, you know, the town is becoming a bit more diverse. So, I was just wondering, what would cause the district to consider having holidays for other cultural and religious holidays, such as like the Jewish High Holidays, Lunar, New Year, et cetera? What would trigger that?
That's a great question, and I don't have a, a good answer for that, to be honest. I mean, you, you know, having knowledge of and worked in other districts that have taken additional days, but they've always been in place already.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know the process or the conversations that communities may have had to get to that place. But it's certainly one that as a committee, you would have the authority to do. There would also be a contractual element to consider as well, too.
Mr. Smaha, you were next, and then Ms. Prince.
Oh, I was going to respond to Mr. McCauley's question.
Can I, can I yield to?
My, my understanding is that holidays aren't prohibitive of race, religion or faith, to start with. But I do think there are some districts that have a high population of certain faiths, where student enrollment is down because of high holidays, for instance, that, similar as to what we were talking about, the December twenty-third, you know, I mean, students coming to school and stuff, that because there's such a high population, and I take, for example, like the Ju- Ju- Judaism, that they have such a decline in student enrollment, that there's really not enough students to really, to really teach. So, like Newen, for instance, I believe, observes their schools closed down for the high holidays because there's such a, a large population of Jewish students. So, that's one of the indicators, although there's no school that I'm aware of, because it would be discriminatory, that would dock a student of a particular faith from practicing
Yep.
and observing their high ho- ho- holidays. So, I know that has some doing with regards to why some districts observe, as opposed to why some do not.
Sure, that makes sense, so kind of like, we're seeing a lot of enrollment down because of that holiday, whatever it is, then they may consider having a day off.
Exactly.
Yep, makes sense.
There was that memo in the packet from Desi about religious, religious holidays
Yeah, yeah.
and making sure, making sure that no students are penalized for observing their religious holidays.
Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, so I think having the December twenty-third off, I think, is the right move. I think having school on the twenty-third is a really, a really bad, a really bad. I mean, as, as a, as a teacher, as, as a parent, it's just that, it, it needs to, we need to not have school on that day. I also think that because of the situation with the presidential election, or, I mean, given the, my feelings on the twenty-third and the presidential, the November presidential election, I think the return to the early release day before Thanksgiving, I think, makes sense. With, with regards to not really wanting to push out the end of the school year too, too far. You know, as, as people know, I work, I work in Boston, and, and we bump up against the end of June every year because we don't ever start until after Labor Day. And so, it's, it's tough with the snow days, and so, that's my feelings on that. If we're going to not have school on the twenty-third, plus the presidential election day, that using, that also not having school on the twenty-seventh would be, I think we should be using that as a, as an early release day. I also echo Mr. Fenely's concerns on the, the parking stuff and just thinking about, like, what is the plan? You know, I mean, for, you know, anything for this year, it's, it's, it's really difficult because it's, you know, families' plan, you know, if they're, you know, you know, like my, you know, my kids drive to school, and if all of a sudden they don't have a place to park, like, that, you know, impacts everything. And, you know, like, like, all right, how are they going to, how are they going to get there? Take the bus, like, where's the bus stop? These are things that, like, I haven't had to consider in a very long time.
Registered for the bus, if they've been driving.
Yeah, they're not registered for the bus. It's like, so like, there's just like lots of, there's just lots of things that, that I'm thinking about that if all of a sudden, like, I, I would assume that, you know, there would be kids would be like, you know what? It's not going to go to school today, like, because they, they can't, can't do it. So, so I just, and, and I, and I'm thinking for next year, I think we need, there needs to be a real solid plan for, like, you know, how, how do you determine which students get to park, come, get to drive to school? And then we also have to realize, you know, when there's construction over there, like, is, I don't, I mean, however long that's going to take, that's going to impact the students, and that's going to also impact transportation because there probably might be students, additional students taking the bus. It's like, it's going to have a huge impact, and it's actually something that I didn't consider kind of before looking at this stuff.
Directly to that point, so, part of the conversations, and, and Mr. Ruggiere can speak in more to this than I can, that would have been had at the town hall school admin building, has been about the discussion of what's the minimum requirement for the students over there? Could there be overflow in another location very nearby? But there's been a lot of work, because for most of the project, it will not occupy the entire parking lot. It will have a certain segment that will need to be carved off, and there'll be a little bit of work, especially around the edges of the parking lot, for sure. But there is going to be a portion, and so there may be some sort of requirement also that it's seniors and then not for that year
Right.
where, where that, that would be, but that would need to be communicated well in advance and all those sorts of things. And there, there have been a lot of conversations you've been involved in.
Yeah, so, one of the things, when we did this, we, we did do it a vacuum, we included the, the high school principal and so forth and some, some information. So, one of the things was, he wanted to make sure, once the Swain School Lot is kind of fenced off, that there's a hundred and fifty spaces available for student parking. So, we've been told that there will be a hundred and fifty spaces. So, how he's going to divvy them up, that's something he's going to work on. But it's not like all the spaces are gone, even when they put the fencing up in March, as an example. That wouldn't be the whole Swain Lot. In the summer, it's a different story because they have to do some work underneath the whole parking lot. So, for, you know, once school's out through the end of August, most likely, that whole parking lot is going to be fenced off. But it, you know, they know the kids have to park there, so.
Ms. Prince?
Quickly, I think when the high school was built, I do believe that Saint Thomas was kind enough to allow some student parking in, in the back of their lot, but to keep the, the front of their lot open in case of church business. So, I, I know that when the high school was being built, that was, they did, I don't know how it was done, if it was part and partial, or similar, you know, only certain seniors could park or something to that effect. But I, I thought I recall that there was, that they afforded us parking in the, the back of the lot.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't remember that. I know that the workers that worked on the high school parked there.
Okay, perhaps that was it.
Much bigger project and so forth, so, whereas the town hall school admin, the workers are going to park at that site. For the high school, they had to have off-site parking, if you will, and I can't remember if students parked over there, but I know that the construction workers, a lot of them parked over there.
All right, I thought, I, I, I just recall that, I know that they were
I can't remember, but I
All right, thank you.
So, I, I think that there are, there are clearly sort of three key places in the calendar where we need to make decisions. So, the day before Thanksgiving, the presidential election and the December twenty-third. That's really kind of what, excuse me, what all the, all the discussion is about. And the different considerations, unfortunately, like a lot of things, you just get trade-offs. Like, there's no one perfect solution that, you know, make sure that every instructional day really counts as a good instructional day, and we have good attendance, and we don't go too late into the year, and we don't have, you know, the problems of holding school during a presidential election. So, it's all about trade-offs. And I think that the, I think that closing school, the district on the presidential election, just really makes a lot of sense. For all the reasons, I won't recap, but for all the reasons that have been put forward, I think, I think that that makes sense to close it then. I share generally Mr. Turner's dislike of early release days. Not only do they generally just not get a lot done, honestly, it sometimes seems like, you know, the kids are coming home, it's like, didn't you just go out the door? I just put you on the bus. How are you back already? Especially with, if you have like separation between the start times of your kids.
I used to love them when I was in school, I don't know what you're all talking about.
Yeah, the, the early release days, and, and then they're also, they also honestly create a lot of headaches for working parents who are like trying to figure out, like, how do we get them off? But then, in the middle of the day, have to suddenly go and fetch them or, or make sure that someone's home. So, I'm also not a huge fan, so I, my inclination is to stick with having the day before Thanksgiving off. But that does cut against my other inclination, which is to not go too far into June. And if we lose that as one of our hundred and eighty days, it just gets added on to the end of the, to the end of the calendar. The December twenty-third, I have to say that before hearing some of the discussion here, I was pretty pro-school on December twenty-third. I just, I don't know, having almost two weeks off for that break just seemed like an awful lot. And again, pushing everything later into June if we don't have school on those days. But I think that hearing some of the discussion here, I'm more persuaded that, it's like, yeah, it'll give us a day that we can count towards one eighty, but it's not going to be much of anything. I mean, the day before, you know, the holiday break, no teacher wants to get into anything deep. It's like, you know, a lot of, people are watching movies and kind of having fun. It's not a huge instructional day, the day before winter break, and it would be even less so on the twenty-third. So, I think, I think I'm kind of being persuaded that that is maybe not a, a good use of our school days to, to have session, session then. One other thing I just want to mention, because, and this kind of ties in a little bit to what Dr. McCauley was saying about, about religious holidays, and I don't think this is something for this year, but something just to kind of, just plant an idea that it might be worthwhile looking at Good Friday and whether it makes sense to continue taking that day off. And again, we've largely done, years ago, when we made some of these changes, for example, the change to the day before Thanksgiving, we did a pretty comprehensive survey of the district, both of the staff and the families, about like, what do you like? Do you still want to start before or after Labor Day? Do you like having the Friday off before Labor Day, and there's that four-day, that four-day Labor Day weekend and so forth? And, you know, we asked a whole bunch of things about, you know, would you attend school on Good Friday and so forth? And, you know, we, that was something that we, for, for largely, kind of just like both on our staff and on our students, we kind of just said, like, you know, there are a lot of people that just aren't going to be there, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense to try and hold, try and hold school that day. But it is kind of an outlier on our calendar, it's the only really purely religious holiday
Is it contractual?
that, that we, that we take off.
It's a teacher's contract?
It would be in the contract, yeah.
And
I think
as, as I said, not something for this year, but something just to kind of be, be thinking about moving, be thinking about moving forward. Dr. McCauley?
Yeah, to just follow that up, I, you know, if we're going to have a day around Easter, I feel the Monday after Easter would be probably better for in case people are traveling for Easter. And also, there's a quirk with Massachusetts where we don't have spring break around Easter, like most other states do too, because we have Patriots' Day, so that definitely adds another wrinkle into that as well, too.
Ms. Prince?
Just to get it on the record, I am a supporter of half-day before Thanksgiving, now, just to get it on the record with Jay. But I will say, I think, in the future, when the board is ready to take it up for discussion, I think getting a poll with regards to who observes, because it is a high holiday in the Catholic faith. So, depending upon what staff members may, practice may be a determining factor in how many substitutes you may need on Good Friday and if you can fill the classroom. So, I think when the board is prepared to do so, that perhaps, great, great, that it's contractual, but it is something that you may want to poll the, at, at least the educators and the staff in, in the district to see how many practice, because it is a day of atonement, and, and so that's all I would suggest.
No, I, I agree, we wouldn't want to make, I wouldn't want to make a change like that without surveying the district and, and getting more
I know religious practices and faith and has changed in the past, you know, fifty years, but there's still some very devout, so, anyway.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, the last, last thing on that point, I think, just a request to Dr. McCauley's point. I'm assuming that as part of your annual review of attendance and of students, that if something started to pop, like, okay, you know, this particular holiday of X or Y faith, we're now seeing consistently an extra, you know, whatever percent, that that would be something that you would have, there's a threshold where you'd say, okay, we do need to evaluate this one or these, these ones, to understand whether or not they would apply. I'm presuming that's part of the process, and if it's not, I mean, it's not necessarily that it's every year, it could be, you know, a summative thing every two or three years of, just a general look back to make sure we aren't missing a trend that's coming along that could impact how we need to do the schedule to make sure we have good attendance on most of school days.
And, if I may, there's the, I mean, the Juneteenth holiday, certainly at the end of June, is another little wrinkle, a newer development that is, I look at that also, as I'm sure you do, tricky. And, you know, the last official day in this version, the first version, would be the thirteenth, right, with no snow days. You know, whether it be excessive heat at the beginning of the year or, or snow days, I think it's inevitable, unfortunately, that we're going to, we would go into that week of the sixteenth. But three days, certainly it would be great to then be able to end on the eighteenth of the order most. Looking ahead, Juneteenth the following year, I know that's a long ways off, the twenty-sixth is on June nineteenth as a Friday, and then the next year is on a Saturday, so. But I'm also cognizant of that, as I'm sure you are as well, too. There's no guarantees, but three days to play with, so to speak, and to take, you know, I, I think that that's probably a reasonable, and I don't know the number of, you know, every year's obviously so different, but, you know, and I guess I only point that out to say if there's some, back to the December day, or sorry, the November day, the twenty-seventh. You know, three days seems to be, I think, a reasonable amount of days to, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, based upon your feedback, you know, looking for direction, obviously, to come back with a version that reflects the overall will of the committee, are you, do you think you're at that point yet, or do you want?
Seeing majority with having the fifth, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-third and no school?
Well, I think, I, I sensed that there was general agreement about no school on the twenty-third, and someone correct me, and about taking the November fifth off. I think maybe there's still some issue about the day before Thanksgiving, I didn't feel that there is as much.
Did you want to, did you want to, this is, this is put in as a first read, so, I'd be interested in Dr. Bryson's input, regardless if, if she too was in agreement of, which she may be, of the Wednesday before as being a day off. But I'm just, I'm just thinking
Let, let me ask it this way, is anyone interested in seeing a calendar other than the two that we have before us now?
I think, I think leaving the, the first one that has twenty-third as is, is one option, and the, and instead of the other option where we have the twenty-third as a day on, you have that one show with the twenty-seventh as a day off, and have those two options for the next conversation, so.
I'm sorry, excuse?
So, yeah, one, one, one is, as shown in what's called first read.
Yes.
The other one, the second one is
November twenty-seventh
the December break modified, would still have the twenty-third as a day off, but would show the twenty-seventh as also a day off, and the impact that has at the end of the year. Because that way, we've got the two options on the one day that's in question now, and we could have that conversation.
So, is that, all that matters, whether to, to have, to have early release or not to have, or have a day, day off?
That's the only thing that appears to be in question.
That seems to be the one.
Yeah, and then we could have that conversation next time.
I think we need to create two, two necessary, two calendars per se, outside of just, okay, how do you want to flow with that? Because it really is just that one point of
Right, so essentially, like, the, the second edition calendar, which Right, so essentially like the, the second edition calendar, which right now is based on a difference in the twenty-third, take that off, again, from the consensus we said before, and instead make this one that doesn't have the half day on the twenty-seventh for us to look at.
I think that, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, makes sense.
Thank you. All right, any further questions? Okay, that takes us to, we have notable business today, that brings us to subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee reports?
So, as I touched, only when I speak, right?
You have gotten timed a couple of times.
Third time's the charm. As I said, I, I think I would like to just see if we can reconvene the school committee handbook, member handbook committee, just so we can kind of tackle it. I don't think it's really difficult, I just think it's more time consuming. So that's the first thing, and I'll send Tracy an email to members with regards to.
Who are the members of that subcommittee?
Sorry?
Who are the members of that subcommittee?
Look, it's in your packet.
I was actually just about to look at.
I think it was Jay, you were, I think you were one.
Me? That's really what I want to know, is it me?
I think it was, you were one, Dave was one at one point.
It was a subcommittee list. I think Bryson might be one of them.
Is she?
I'm looking it up right now.
Was or she is now.
I can't remember if it was last.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, so. Tell you in one second, guys.
Yes, Handbook Subcommittee.
Subcommittees. The Handbook Protocol Subcommittee is MJ, Jen and Jay.
So they're, yes.
So you're mine, so, but I'll, I'll email, I'll ask Tracy to see if we can email sometimes. And Dr. Brandon, I'd like for you to participate as you have.
Sure.
To add your insight, that's, because it, it, it's primarily to help any new onboarding members, just to kind of get the lay of the land, just the foundational aspect, so. Which is a good kind of segue that into my next topic, which is, I'd like to notify the board and the, the district's leadership and staff and the community that I am not planning on running in April. So my seat will be, will be available for elections. So it, it's very difficult for me to stand here because this board and the work that I've been fortunate to do for the past twelve years is, is a part of my fabric and who I am. So it's a very difficult decision, but my personal life has made it so that I can't put forth the action behind the work that we do, which is so vital and into moving education in our district forward. Doesn't mean I, if I passionate, I'm just as passionate and, and I don't think, you know, being Portuguese, I'll always be a vocal set. So I, I do hope it is my intention and I will save a longer diatribe for April, but it is my hope to continue at some capacity, whether it be to volunteer on a committee, a subcommittee for the district or what other, whatever other capacity could be utilized. But, so in saying that, I would welcome anybody who may be interested in this position to feel free to reach out if there are, and to any one of our members to inquire about possibly pulling papers and running for the seat. It is a very rewarding, it is a lot of hard work, but it is very rewarding work, in the very least. And I, I know I'll say this again, but I, I just want to sincerely thank my, the board members I've served with, the superintendents I've served with, I'm divorcing you, Paul. And the community that I've had the pleasure of having the trust. And I hope I've served you well and your, and your children. But I, and, but this is certainly not to say that I'm not gonna work hard until the, the last day. I've got a lot of irons in the fires that I'm hoping that I can accomplish a lot of it before the end of my term with the help of my, my, help of my colleagues. So, but I, I thank you for a great twelve years and very good. I don't think, I think that's all I have to say, but thank you.
Thank you.
There'll be much, much more to say later, but thank you for your twelve years of service.
Thank you.
To the children of Wilmington.
It's my absolute pleasure, really, yes.
All right, item nine, correspondence.
None this evening.
All right, future committee dates and other notable items. February first, the MSBA Wildwood Project Community Forum, six thirty PM over Zoom. February seventh is the next Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, six PM here in this room. The thirteenth will be our LGBTQIA+ Parent Discussion Group at six PM, which is going to be both live here and also available virtually. February fourteenth is our next regular school committee meeting and our budget hearing. And then the nineteenth is the beginning of the February break. Anything, Stephen, that I was missing from?
Thought there was a meeting tomorrow night for the Wildwood.
There's a Wildwood School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night.
That's the one that, that rung a bell?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So, couple of questions. Is that the form flyer that's in our packet?
The form flyer is in the packet, yes.
I also, two questions, one of which is the town manager's budget presentation. It, it is typical that representation from this board is, is there in the, in, in the audience. Not that it's necessary, but it's helpful, just to, just to say that if anybody has that flexibility within their schedule to do so. I also would like, cause I do think it's important, just to make note for those people who don't scour our packets, that on February thirteenth, between six and seven in the high school, this group instruction room, the LGBTQIA Parent Discussion Group will take place with Erin Durnum and Sarah Jean Phillips presenting. So it's for social, they're, they're social emotional and family engagement specialists. So if, if anybody is interested in partaking and participating either in person or via Zoom, I highly encourage you going, I believe it would, I believe it's on our website this, this event.
District calendar.
Just thank you, district calendar to look into it, if, if anyone has additional interest. But I, I, I do think, I think it's a great support mechanism for a diverse student body and families who support, and, and their families.
That's the end of our agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Burns, second by Mr. Samaha, all in favor, and we are adjourned. Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.